We are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting site where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. I call to order the work session for the evening of February 28, 2023. For the record, I will call roll. I do know that Mr. Burnett is joining us, I believe, virtually. Mr. Burnett, are you present? If not now, maybe later. Ms. Bittersmith.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler. Thank you. Ms. Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Norini.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Cha cha cha.
Thank you. Dr. Thor.
Here.
Thank you. All board members are present with my attendance as well. Mr. Burnett is, will be joining us virtually in a few minutes. So today, the topic of our work session is our budget for proposed budget for fiscal year 2024. Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to introduce our presenter this afternoon?
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, those in attendance here in person and around the world. I'd like to introduce Ms. Kim Grineo, our Chief Financial Officer, who is going to give you our next iteration of where we are with the budget overview as we are. I would think that we're approaching finish line over the next month or two, Kim. So we're getting close. Take it away, Kim.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gonzalez. Good evening, President Sullivan, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the governing board, members of CEC, colleagues and guests. I'm Kim Grineo and I'm the Vice Chancellor for Business Services. And today, we will be going through a presentation, which I think Elsa's going to bring up for the kind of the first overview of our 2024 budget. Yes, I do think we're, I wouldn't say necessarily in the home stretch yet, but we're getting pretty close to that. You'll see on our very last slide where we talk about next steps. We'll have another presentation in March at a work session. And then in April, you all will receive the first read of the budget book, which really truly means that we're in the final stretch, if not the final stretch. So I do have a song choice for today, and I'll have to say I kind of went easy. And I picked "Money" by Pink Floyd, probably not an uncommon song when you're talking about budget. And I kind of picked it because it's easy and it might be the easiest thing we have about the budget process in the coming years. So we'll pick that song. So we'll go to, Elsa, are you bringing up the presentation? Sorry. That's okay. So I can get started. We have just a few things on our agenda for tonight. One will be to start with a quick overview of the budget development process for the fiscal '24 budget. Then we'll take a look at the summaries of proposed resources and uses for each of the funds. And we'll wrap up the presentation with a review of the next steps for the '23-'24 budget. And you can go to the next slide, Elsa. And the next slide. Okay, thank you. So for the fiscal '24 budget development process, again, this is just an overview of how we've gotten to today's presentation. I'll share that items with a check mark on that list have been completed or are substantially complete. Those without a check mark are still in process. So of course, we start with a review of revenues and expenditures for all funds. We look at options and recommendations for tuition, which of course, we all know was completed in December of '22. We will update the five-year look as well as review options for the 1% expenditure reduction in the general fund. Both of those are in process now. And we still have a little bit of work to do on those, and you'll hear a little bit more about those later. For the restricted funds, we do solicit input from grants development teams at both the colleges and the district office. In the capital funding space, we solicit input from district facilities, planning and development, as well as college facilities and financial teams. And that's in process as well. There may be some small changes to those, to the capital schedules we'll look at in a bit, but we should be pretty close to finish there. And then any budget proposals get reviewed by the Advisory Budget Council, the Chancellor, and then the Chancellor's Executive Council before they come to the board as part of the budget package for you all to review and adopt, hopefully. The next slide, please, Elsa, will take us to the multi-year general fund projections. I keep referring to this as a five-year look. This is now a six-year look, so I need to change my terms to multi-year, which probably makes a little bit more sense. As just a reminder, we embarked on this with last year's budget to start to look a little bit more forward to where our financial position is. A lot of that is driven by the fact that we've had an unbalanced budget now for the last few years. And our desire is to get back to a balanced budget for the general fund. So we need to be able to look at resources going forward. So for the first dollar column there is the fiscal year '23 adopted, just as a reminder of what we're doing for this fiscal year. And then ends with fiscal year '28 on the far right column. So today, we'll spend most of our time, of course, in the fiscal year '24 space. What I want to point out to, about this is we have built in the tuition increases approved by the board in December. But you'll also notice that on the similar lines going across, we've changed all of those now to be determined. You'll remember back last year, we had numbers in those spaces. So I've decided to pull those out for now. And ABC will be looking at making some recommendations for those lines. And you should have that for the March presentation as an update. I do want to share, we don't plan, don't anticipate recommending or asking for a basic tuition increase in fiscal '25, certainly with the rather large increase we did for, or are doing for fiscal '24. We want to not look at that. That doesn't mean we won't have any in out years. You'll remember asking me questions about this means we'll never have to do another one again. You guys didn't say that. And I said, I can't guarantee that. So we need to look at where the numbers fall in the coming years. The other thing I want to say is we don't want to take differential tuition off the table. So you'll notice even in fiscal '25, we have that as a TBD as well. I shared with you all last fall that we ran into some big complications in the differential tuition space. And we decided we needed to take time, step back and take another look at that whole concept and look at different things relating to costs of courses, contact hours versus paid hours, credit hours, all of those kinds of things. So those are things we want to do in the coming year for fiscal year '25. So just to make sure I manage expectations, that doesn't mean we'll have a solution next, or next month. It just means that we might have some dollars we can plug in there as estimates. And then we'll work through what the mechanics might actually be for fiscal '25. Let's see. So I think that's enough on that slide for now. So we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. So we'll start with the general fund. And this is a look at revenues and sources for the year. That middle column on the right is proposed fiscal '24. Proposed revenues include property taxes from new construction. We did get final numbers from the county in, on February 10th. I think it came in just before midnight on the 10th. And then we got revisions on the morning of the 12th, I believe. So maybe 13th. So those did come in just about close to estimate. So that's about $13.7 million of new revenues from new construction and property taxes. We, you'll notice one of the big changes is we've zeroed out the HERF lost revenue or federal grant funds for the general fund. We'll talk a little bit more about HERF a little bit later. But that is expected to be completed by June 30th, so there would be no dollars there. And of course, we did build in the tuition increase as we've talked about. So that would bring total revenues to about $734 million. With a few transfers from funds, capital and auxiliary funds, total revenues of just under $740 million. And with that, we can go to the next slide, Elsa. And we carry over that total revenue to the expenditure and uses slide. So that's your very top line. The expenditures of $738 million represent the base expenditures. So colleges and district office divisions are still working through their uses of those funds, if you will, making small changes typically. We don't have huge changes from year to year, but they're still in the budget development process. That's the part that will be complete by the time we bring the budget schedule to you all in April for your first read. We will, when we do that, we'll pull the numbers by function such as instruction and academic support, and then also by classification, like personnel, contractual services, et cetera. And that will be included in the budget schedule. For fiscal '24, the next line down, we do have a budget reduction, which was planned 1% for $7.4 million reduction. We have required expenditures of $1.2 million. And those are stemming from policy manual changes such as education for educational advancements for employees, increases due to ASRS rate change. So we did, last year, we had a small decrease. This year, we have a small increase from 12.17% to 12.29%. And then we also have a small amount to increase for president and chancellor scholarships. Proposed expenditures of $26 million includes the strategic compensation plan for year three, and then also a small amount increase for the marketing budget. That was started a couple of years ago, and so this is, I think, year two of the marketing changes. And then we have student success initiatives of $3.3 million. So this line was added. This is the result of the additional $2 per credit hour increase in tuition. So we wanted to make sure we called this out separately. Sorry. It's my train of thought. Interim Provost Bettina Selis and I will be looking at working with the colleges and constituency groups, stakeholders, to determine the best strategic way with which to use those funds. And the intention is that they will result in demonstrable positive impacts for students. Could be a proposal process or system-wide action or actions that will significantly impact students. And that brings then the total expenditures planned for the year to $761.2 million. That would result or anticipate a use of fund balance of about $21 million, with an ending fund balance of about $189 million. We do have a portion of that, or the majority of that $189 million in, reserved in a few categories, one of which is financial stability and operating reserves. We have a board policy that states it needs to be 10%. A few years ago, we added another 6% to that, not as part of the policy, but as part of strategic financial stability desire to get to a higher rate than, than 10%. The 16% is about two months' worth of operations expenditures. So that's fairly small in an institution our size. So that's why we had gone to the 16%. The $38.7 million are system-wide strategic efforts. This was the result of us recovering lost tuition revenues in fiscal '21 from HERF dollars. And they have been set aside for the purpose of those system-wide efforts around the student experience that we want to make changes with, because those are things that we know we need to do. So we've decided to set, set those aside for that purpose. And then college carry forward, colleges and district office divisions are able to carry forward a small percentage of their adopted budget from year to year. So total reserves of $178 million, which leaves an uncommitted fund balance of about $11 million. So we can see how quickly the $189 falls, sorry, $189 million falls to a whopping $11 million. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. And we're going to move into the auxiliary fund. And these are sources and uses of the auxiliary fund. The proposed figures in the, again, the center column, look very similar to those of '23. Tuition and fees are anticipated to remain fairly consistent. And tuition and fees in the auxiliary fund are typically around, course fees are accounted for here. Non-credit courses are accounted for here. So these are not the non-credit activities. Skill centers are accounted for in the auxiliary fund as well. And that transfer in from the general fund of $9.2 million in Prop 207 is the operational funding support for the skill centers that we moved from the general fund to Prop 207 as part of the budget process, I believe, for fiscal '22. So that then brings total revenue expected for the fund to be about $38.5 million. Expenditures are expected to be around $39 million, so an estimated ending fund balance of $77 million. And those are generally dedicated at the colleges as to what they're used for. So as an example, course fees can only be used for course fees. So we would show that as part of a, a college reserve and not as dollars that are available to be redirected, if you will. So with that, Elsa, we'll go to the next slide, which is the restricted fund. So the restricted fund takes care of all of our external funding sources, if you will, that are not operational funding, such as tuition and fees. So this includes all of our grants and contracts. It also includes our federal HERF monies. Again, you'll notice that that goes from $94.8 million to zero in fiscal '24. And HERF is expected to end, as I said, June 30th of 2023. So we don't anticipate any expenditures for next year or revenues. The STEM funding amount we have in there of $7.9 million is what is in the governor's budget. So we'll know what that final number is when the state passes a budget. So it may or may not be $7.9 million. Prop 207 and Prop 301, which we'll talk about a little bit more on the next couple of slides, is intended to have revenues and fund balance of $35 million and $30 million, respectively. And then on the financial aid portion, which is the second half of that slide, federal student aid is about $112 million. Again, HERF goes from $13 million to zero for fiscal '24. And then there are scholarship dollars in there as well at $7.4 million. So total for restricted fund of $231.4 million. We don't, we only present revenues and resources on this slide because, for all intents and purposes, expenditure should match revenues just because of the way the restricted fund works. The exception to that is, is 207 and 301, which is why we have separate slides on those. So with that, Elsa, we can go to the next slide, which is Prop 301. So we anticipate for '24 sales tax revenues to be about $17.4 million. So slight increase over the prior year with a beginning fund balance of $12.7 million or total resources of $30.4 million. Fairly consistent from year to year. We do still have 39 faculty in the workforce or CTE areas that continue to be funded with Prop 301 dollars. We also have college workforce programs and equipment, which includes annual allocations to the colleges as well as carry forward balances that they have from a proposal process we did a couple of years ago, that they're still spending down those balances on their projects. I will share that the workforce, I'm sorry, the Workforce Funding Council continues its evaluation of current allocation approach for those college allocations. And they may recommend changes still for fiscal '24. So this is an area that could have some changes over the next month or so. And with that, we can go to the next slide, Elsa, which is Prop 207. So just a reminder that Prop 207 is the excise tax on the sale of marijuana, a portion of which comes to the community college districts to support workforce and STEM programs. In addition to funding the support for the skill centers, which is that first expenditure line of $7.8 million, and bridge funding for the general fund, which we put in place for fiscal '23, the Workforce Funding Council has identified the following categories for potential expenses. And this started with last year's budget. We have a portion in operations. An example of an expense there would be for baccalaureate degrees. We do have $2 million set aside each year to fund the launch, the first two years, the launch years of any new baccalaureate programs that we have. And then we also have some system level or district-wide support for workforce engagement. In the innovation space, so we've got innovation awards there of $11 million for fiscal '24. We used a proposal process with the Workforce Development Council. And we have 36 proposals submitted, some of which included a variety of individual colleges, regional proposals and system-wide proposals. Eight projects were awarded a total of $12.6 million over a three-year period, starting with fiscal 2024. Similar to external grants, recipients need to provide annual reports on progress. And spending will be monitored to ensure that programs are moving forward. I will say, we're very excited to see the outcomes of this spending and these new dollars for programs that we hope will have large impacts in our communities. The last category is support for recently launched programs. And so what, one of the things that we found is we can provide launch dollars for activities, but they don't necessarily start to pay for themselves after the first year, two years or three years. So we did create a category to be able to help support recently launched programs as well. And for fiscal '24, that's anticipated to be about $5 million. We did set aside a reserve of around $5 million for these funds as well that will allow us to either be able to navigate different economic times, because this is a sales tax generated, so it could go up and it could go down. And then also to be able to fund some other new initiatives potentially, if they should come forward during the year or after the time, potentially when resources are solicited or proposals are solicited. So with that, then Elsa, we can go to the next slide, which is more information about HERF funds, Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. So of the $332 million that Maricopa colleges were awarded, we've used just over $307 million of that, which is, well, I wrote down what was remaining. We have $25 million remaining, which is about 7.5%. So I guess 92.5% has been expended or committed to date. So we have until June 30th of this year in order to finish those dollars, which I think that we won't have an issue with. And we will potentially use a portion of that $25 million to fund additional lost tuition revenue based on enrollment declines from fall of '19 to fall of '22. And that actually is the bridge funding that we had identified for the fiscal '23 budget in the general fund. So we're working out that process right now. So with that, we can shift into capital territory. Thank you, Elsa. So this is the overview of resources and expenditures for capital. And it is a preliminary view, although I think it's probably fairly close to finished. We anticipate that the tax shift for fiscal '24 will generate approximately $16.4 million in new revenues. That'll bring us up to a little over $52 million a year in property taxes specifically for capital programs. And just as a reminder that this is the savings from declining bond debt service payments as our 2004 bond program bonds are paid off. The total resources, including fund balance, is anticipated to be about $186 million in capital funds, with expenses coming in at just under $82 million. And with that, we can go to the next slide, Elsa, and we'll talk a little bit more details about the expenditures by category. So the first group is a group that is primarily overseen by facilities, planning and development at the district office. These are categories that are very typically seen in the capital space, such as district-wide roofing, maintenance and pavement, major equipment replacements, hazardous material abatements. We do also have the, the second line from the bottom of that particular category is deferred maintenance. So we anticipate about $25.9 million to be spent in the deferred maintenance space in fiscal '24. So total expenditures for that category is about $62.1 million. And in the second section, the additional district-wide and college capital expenses, the first line there, college and DO capital allocations of $11 million. That was what we started with last year's budget, where the colleges and divisions are allocated, an ongoing allocation of capital dollars for the colleges. And this was part of the general fund budget strategies that we adopted last year and moved out those expenses from the general fund and are using part of the capital dollars generated from property taxes to fund those expenditures. The $2 million for course equipment is an annual amount that we've had for a few years now. And this is for instructional equipment costing between $5,000 and $20,000. And we're using capital funds for those rather than assessing course fees per the latest course fee guidelines. And that's total expenditures of a little under $20 million. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. This is an overview of the deferred maintenance program. So it's by activity and investment criteria for the next five years. You've seen this in prior years as well. We do update it from year to year. Planned expenses in future years are adjusted for an inflation rate of 3.5%, which for years has been a reasonable assumption. We'll continue to reevaluate that as we go forward. There is an intentionality to not wanting to have 10% inflation adjustments for fiscal '28 when we may not have that. So this is something that we will reevaluate each year as we go through the budget process. Just as a little bit of history, because I do know we have a couple of new board members on our board. The deferred maintenance program was a study done by an outside consultant some years ago, resulting in identifying the need for more than $300 million of expenses and thousands of deferred maintenance projects. All projects were categorized using different criteria and prioritized to ensure the most critical projects were addressed, were addressed first. As a mechanism to fund this work, we began shifting property taxes from debt service on our bonds as they're retired to capital programs. And you'll see a little bit more of that in the upcoming slides. So with that, we can go to the next slide, please, Elsa. And this is just a graphical representation of that capital funding program and the estimated annual fund balance. We can see that as funding from the tax shift continues to build over the years, we draw less from fund balance annually to work through the deferred maintenance plan, and that is by design and one that we plan to continue. And we can go to the next slide, Elsa, which, this is the final slide in the capital arena. And it's a table that shows how the tax rates function with the tax shift. And so if you look at that, that peach line, that orange line, which is fiscal '24 proposed, and go to the third column from the right, the 1.1404, what this shows is that the new tax rate with the shift for '24 is the 1.14, whereas the tax rate for fiscal '23 was just under 1.2. And so it's actually a decline of nearly five cents. I love talking about five cents when we talk about anything. But the point of it is that it is still a decline, even with the tax shift, the tax rate is going down. So, and I, just to share, all by, all bonds for the 2004 program will be retired as of July 1st of 2027. So we'll continue to look at these over the coming years as we go through the budget process. And that then finally takes us to the next steps. So you guys survived all of that information. And the next steps in the '24 process, as we do have the boardwork session set up for March 28th, I will do my best to not repeat everything I said today. I promise I won't repeat everything I said today. Anything that needs updating, we'll make sure we get updated. And then I think there'll be a few more pieces of information that is new that we'll share with all of you. And then at the April 25th meeting, you will get the first read of the complete 2024 budget schedule. It's multiple pages. And then May 23rd, we'll hold a truth and taxation public hearing on the property tax increase. Because we are proposing an increase that is above the new construction amount, we are required to hold a truth and taxation hearing. And then also, we will ask you to adopt the fiscal '24 budget and a special meeting immediately following the truth and taxation hearing. And I'm happy to stop talking and take whatever questions or notes you all have for me today.
Thank you, Ms. Grineo. This is a lot of information. And I have a red pen and I was making all sorts of notes. And I'm sure I'm not alone in that regard. Certainly, there's a lot for us to think about. And as we move through any conversation or questions from board members, I know we all will be curious of where this is going to take us. And what are we creating jeopardy for, some of those things? I would, I guess, I'm going to leap off with that and then I'm going to go through the board. So this budget, looking at it, I mean, we don't have a lot of wiggle room. And we still are asking for the 1% reduction to start with. I don't anticipate that having to shift. We've put out requests for a new economic model to be considered. So what are you seeing in this budget that, that we, A, have to pay particular attention to? And my other piece is, what are we putting in jeopardy with this budget? And then we can figure out, oh dear, what do we do to, to save that? But anyway, those would be my two primary questions. And then I, I'll go up and down the board.
So those are big questions.
Yeah, well, sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm supposed to be able to answer them. I'll do my best.
I have no doubt. If anyone could, you can.
Well, I can do a good dance. You guys don't want to see me dance either.
Yeah, Pink Floyd.
There you go. I'm going to answer the, I'm going to attempt to answer the second one first, which is the new economic model. Absolutely something we need to do and we need to get started on. So our commitment is to get that work launched as soon as possible. I'd like to say that we're, you know, far down the path, but we're not. We've spent a lot of time, as you all know, in the, the tuition space took up most of the fall semester. And then I still can't believe it's March or February 28th. So we want to have that in place and ready to go for fiscal '25 budget. We also want to make sure that we step through it in a way that is the most productive way possible, because we need to be very thoughtful. This could set the stage for what we do in future years. So I could get three people in a room, we could slam something together, but that is not at all what we want to do. It also is going to result in very difficult conversations for us as a district. And so we want to be very thoughtful in how we proceed. So what I will share, and I, I don't think that this is not uncommon knowledge, but you all have heard me talk about our this is not uncommon knowledge, but you all have heard me talk about our expenditure limit constraints. And I think we'll have more information to share about that at the March meeting as well. I'm getting more and more concerned about where our budget goes when it comes to expenditure limit constraints. So some of that is driven by enrollment and the lack of bouncing back to 2020, but that is not the entire issue. So we, as a system, have to figure out how do we get to a place where the expenditure limit isn't holding us back, isn't making decisions for us that we don't want it to make. So I think that there are efforts underway to try to figure out with the legislature, are there ways that we can fix it? There have been some minor tweaks that have occurred, but no wholesale changes. And just as a reminder for anybody in the audience who hasn't been subjected to conversation about the expenditure limit, it's a limit that was set in 1980, and the base was set in 1980. It is very oldie moldy, to quote an old colleague of mine, that it truly desperately needs to be updated. And our legislature is challenged with how to do that and what mechanisms they have with which to do so. So until we have relief under the expenditure limit, that's going to limit what we're able to do. So the increase in tuition and fees in '24 absolutely is helpful. The reductions we're taking are absolutely helpful. The strategic compensation plan is a complication for us, but it is something that we are committed to because it adds $25 million of new expenses each year. So, but as a system, we need to figure out how we're going to work through all of those complications. And part of that is about the new economic model, but some of it also is about how does Maricopa do things more efficiently? You know, are there things that we can do that allow us to shift resources around without having to just add resources every time we come to the table? So, so those are some concerns that I have when it comes to our budget and the future years. You know, will the '24 budget work? Yeah, the '24 budget will work. But I also believe I'm in a role that I'm responsible for making sure that a '24 budget doesn't mean we have to make drastic other decisions, you know, in '25 and '26. And I don't think that's what we want to do as a system, certainly not what I want to do. So I think there's a lot of things that need to, a lot more conversation and strategy that needs to occur over the coming months. I wouldn't even say years, it may take years, but we've got to start having those conversations sooner rather than later.
And going back to where there's jeopardy, is there, other than the general comments, is there anything you're seeing this year that you're shaking your head now?
No, I don't, I don't think so. Yeah, so I, poor Dr. Gonzalez got to have his one-on-one with me yesterday. And I thought,
He's still alive. He's down there.
And I said, I, you know, one of my challenges, my brain never shuts off. So I'm constantly thinking of things. And I shared with him, I said, some things have been popping in my head over the weekend. And I gotta, you know, just kind of sit down and work through some of the different thoughts that have come into play. So there may be some changes in the March presentation, for instance, if, if some of the things I've been thinking of might help us in the expenditure limit space. So again, I want to protect Maricopa the best way that I can. I also think I have a responsibility to make sure that we know what we're dealing with and that we're very transparent in what our issues are, what our challenges are.
Certainly appreciate your attention to that. Going back to one thing you called out, the legislative agenda of the district is to find and manage some solution to the expenditure limit issue. I know Ms. Renfro and her team are working deliberately and they're engaging us to think of options to support and make comment to, provide comment to what you're raising with us. It's very much top of mind as I look down there and see Dr. Gonzalez as I pass all the board members on both sides. All of us are very invested in finding a solution. It may not be for tomorrow. So I appreciate that you're thinking about how to get us through a year, but we're definitely keeping that top of mind as priorities. So appreciate that. The other thing, could you, because I believe in April, we will get an update on the compensation package. For the benefit of our new members, could you just go back just a tinge and explain why that is top of mind for us and why we are in the position we are? I know we will have a thorough presentation in, I think it's April, and we will appreciate that. But only a few of us as current board members were here to vote on that. So I think it might be helpful for some others, briefly, not along history, to bring us up to, you know, everything has a history, but to bring us up to date and just inform why that is such an important line item in our budget and why we stay committed to seeing that.
Absolutely. And I'll do my best. And I'm sure that Frank will throw something at me if I say something wrong. So, I didn't know, back up. So there, a few years ago, I guess I would say there, we had done an analysis on Maricopa's compensation. We acknowledged the fact that we had not done any raises of any significance in several years. I won't remember how many years that was, but it was probably six or seven. We might have had a 1% raise here and there in that space. Was it eight?
Yeah, I think it was close to eight.
Eight. And we had also done some analysis against the market, and we were able to document and show how far behind we were in the market. And keep in mind, too, that this was well prior to the pandemic. So when we look at market today, we're, all the strides we've made are likely erased by everything that has happened in the last two years as well. So it's, it's an even bigger challenge for us. But for all intents and purposes, what was put forth was to look at a way to get Maricopa back on track. For, for many, many, many years, we were much more diligent about compensating our employees. And we were on a step and grade system. And so most years, there was a step increase, which averaged out, I think, to maybe three to four to five percent a year of an increase. And then oftentimes, too, there was a cola on top of that of maybe a one or 2%. And for years then later, we hadn't done any of those increases. So, and it was really looked at as financial constraints as students declined, because we've, you know, had declining enrollment for some time, nothing significant, nothing obviously like what happened after 2020. But we just looked at it that there were fewer resources available. So the first place that we chose then not to use those funds were on employees. And year after year of that, you know, when you're here, when you're there, you can survive that. But when you start losing employees because others of your competitors are now paying more, when Maricopa was always the better game in town, makes us have to wake up and realize we've got to do something better on behalf of our employees. So, so that was really when the strategic compensation plan was born. And it was a five-year plan, looked at trying to stabilize and gain back some of that market loss, as well as adjust for inflation even during that time period. And again, that was all done prior to the pandemic. So, so that's where we are. And that's what was approved and what was adopted in concept. But every year, it comes back to the board for your approval on that particular plan year and kind of the approach to that plan year. Did I get that okay?
And thank you. I just wanted everyone to appreciate that it exists and why it exists. And it's something that we have made a commitment not to rattle in a negative way. So.
It is a priority for a system. And, you know, one of the things I would share, too, is that I think had we not done that, the pandemic would have been even worse for us because I think people would have been leaving in droves. And knowing that that compensation plan was in place, I think helped us keep some folks that might have otherwise made a different choice. So in, you know, retrospect, I'm glad we did it for sure because I think it helped us through that space. Now it's just a matter of making sure that we keep it as a priority for us as a system.
Thank you for that explanation. Right, board members, I'm going to start with you, Ms. Smith. Do you have any comments and questions, please?
I do. Thank you. Apologies if I've asked this before. As you know, I always like to think about philanthropic opportunities as an important revenue source. And so can you please remind me, I saw grants and contracts grouped in a couple areas, but I'm wondering if there's a reason why federal grants were called out. And I guess that's just HERF. I'm on Slide 5, General Fund Sources. Is there a reason why we don't have a category for philanthropic funds there? I know, as I said, I saw grants and contracts in other places, but if you could situate me as to how we're thinking about philanthropy as a funding source and explain Slide 5 in particular, that would be great.
So it's actually on Slide 8. Slide 5 for the general fund was just the HERF lost revenue dollars. That's not really a grant coming into the general fund. So the restricted fund is where all of those external resources come in. And it's actually the scholarships on the, kind of the last line under student financial aid. So it's about 7.3 million that comes in, both external scholarships and also that leap. But all the scholarships that come into, obviously, for us, are student financial aid. So they're in that category.
So what about philanthropic contributions that are not scholarships?
So those would come in. The only other place I can think of where we would have those would be in the private grant area. But primarily, anything that gets donated to us is for scholarships for students. It's rare that we have other types of donations. They would really come into us as a private grant, which would have an intended use of those funds and be restricted for that purpose. So that would actually be in the top line, the grants and contracts under, that should probably say federal, state, and private, federal, state, private, and local grants and contracts. That's where that would hit.
And how was the target for fiscal '24 chosen for grants and contracts? Like, so basically, it was a 0.1 increase. How was that derived?
So we work with the district office grants development office, and we also work with the college grants development offices. Those should include scholarship offices as well. They're not always in the same space. But certainly, if there is an anticipation by a college that they're going to have a new grant opportunity, they'll go ahead and include that in their portion of the budget proposal. Oftentimes, these numbers are grossed up a bit, so that if we have an opportunity during the year that we hadn't planned for, we can accept it because the last thing we'd want to do is have to turn away any kind of a grant opportunity. So oftentimes, we look at trend analyses on what types of activities we've had over the years. But the primary reach out is to find out, is there something new that you're planning to apply for that is significant that we need to include in our budget planning process?
Got it. Thank you. And then am I interpreting it correctly that your, this current budget is basically looking at flat enrollment? And that is how you determined the tuition and fee figure? Since you called out the tuition increase, it looks like the about projected amount would be flat. Can you unpack that a bit more as to why it went that way?
Absolutely. And thank you for that question, because I should have said that, and I forgot to say that. So in the general fund area, we did have enrollment flat. We are projecting enrollment to be flat from '23 to '24. It's really just a conservative approach. We are, as I'm sure you all are aware, have a slight increase in enrollment for '23, which we're really excited about. We hope to have an increase in '24 as well. It just starts to get more challenging when we depend on having those resources and allocate them out, and then they don't materialize. So when we budget, and we've done this historically for a very long time, we're fairly conservative in when we budget for revenues. Those are not always things we can actually control. So we tend to be conservative on revenues. And so what we've done in the five-year look or the multi-year look, we do have 2% increases built in, in '25 and later for each of those years. If you remember way back to last year, we did originally anticipate in that five-year look, a 2% increase in '24. Where we were with where '23 was going, we weren't sure that we would do another 2% increase. So we just decided to be conservative and keep it flat from '23 to '24. And we'll continue to revise the out years as we go through those years as well.
Okay, give me one more minute. I had one other thought. I wanted to look at expenditures, and now I just lost my place. Okay, so I'm maybe, I'm wondering if this is the right place to look. So Slide 6, general fund uses. Okay, that's where I was looking for it. So the, I thought it was interesting. So it says compensation plan and marketing. So that's marketing of the compensation plan? No, it is both combined. Is there a reason why the line items combined?
Um, no.
I mean, just because I'm curious to know, especially as we think about wanting an increased enrollment, roughly what our marketing budget is per year?
So absolutely. And I can provide that information. I don't have it at my fingertips, but I can certainly get that for you. What this line has generally been called in the past are new, is just new expenditures. And because there's only two areas, we decided to call out those two areas. I can tell you that it, for the compensation plan, it's 24.6 million, and marketing's about a $1.4 million increase.
I would be curious to know how our marketing budget looks in comparison to districts of comparable size. And I would say, in particular, given the bachelor's degree opportunity, I want to make sure that the way that we've designed our budget gives us ample marketing budget to really get the word out at this critical time.
We can certainly pull that for you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Davis?
Well, I have questions, and they're probably because I'm new, but, and they may be stupid, for all I know. Okay.
There is no stupid question.
Well, I have three questions, and I'm going to say that upfront because I can't write them down, so I hope I remember all of them. Okay, so my first question is, how close are we to the aggregate expenditure limit?
Okay, that's probably the most loaded question you could ask, Ms. Davis. So our expenditure limit functions a little bit differently than K-12 AEL does. Our limit is only ours. We're not combined with all of the other districts. We have the ability that I don't think K-12 has the ability to do of building up carryforward for expenditure limit from one year to the next. So if we have, let me, let me put it this way. For years, we had more tuition and fee revenues combined with property taxes that we didn't spend. And so what we would do is we'd carry forward those tuition and fee revenues that are excludable and build expenditure limit capacity. So we've done that for years and years and years. And the last few years, though, we have started to have to use that expenditure limit carryforward in order to stay under the limit. So that's why it's difficult to answer that question, because we're able to artificially, in a very legal way, stay under the limit. So I'm working on putting together an analysis of kind of where we've been and where we are today and what we look like going forward. And that is something that, if not in that form, some form similar to that, I'll be sharing with the board as well, so that you all know kind of where we are in the expenditure limit space. It's absolutely critical for all future conversations and expenditure limit because it's important everybody knows and understands a bit more about how it works. But I'll share with you all that the workbook that we have every year is probably 50 tabs and, you know, would print reams of paper in order to calculate us against the expenditure limit. It's extremely unpleasant.
So you get to calculate it, or does somebody calculate it for you?
One of my team members does, but I get to review it because I'm the only one that's reviewed it for years. And everybody else looks at it and says, oh, my gosh, what am I supposed to do with this? So it's a very, it's a very interesting and challenging space. Some of the complication is because of the whole carryforward concept, but we're not willing to give that up to make the process easier either. So.
Exactly. Okay. Well, that answers that. My next question is about bonds. You referenced that the bonds would be done by '27, I think you said? What bonds are we, are we talking about district-wide bonds? Or are we talking about college-specific bonds? Or what are we talking about here?
So thank you for the question, Ms. Davis. So in 2004, the voters approved almost a billion-dollar bond program for Maricopa. So Maricopa County Community College District is the legal entity. So we are the entity that is able to levy property taxes and able to go to the voters to ask for approval to issue bonds, and then subsequently approval to levy secondary property taxes with which we use to pay the debt service on those bonds. So since 2004, and I'm going to, I'm going to probably not get all my dates correctly, but over about a 10-year period, we issued that $951 million of bonds about every two years. Some bond issues were around 100 million. Our largest one, I think, was like 210 million. So, because a bond program has a nice bell curve. So in the center, we would have issued far more. And we do that based on an analysis of a capital master plan that was created ahead of that 2004 bond program. And part of what we used, obviously, to go to the public and say, will you please let us do this? And it was a full analysis on And it was a full analysis on facilities at our colleges, where growth points were. We've done bond programs in, I believe it was '84 and '94 and 2004. Oftentimes, what we would do is in one bond program, we would buy vacant land in an up-and-coming area that we thought we might need a campus. And then in the next bond program, so 10 years later, if it came to fruition, we would develop that land with those bond proceeds. So it's, it's the Maricopa Community College District that issues those bonds and then levies the taxes to pay the debt service on them.
Ray, I thought those bonds were going to you. And then my final question is, we did a visit, Ms. Butler and I did a visit with Glendale Community College, and we visited a couple of programs. One of them was the automotive program. And the automotive instructor said, you know, the society is moving toward electric vehicles. And at some point in time, you know, it would be great if we had an electric vehicle program, which then means that we have to get electric vehicles for the students to work on and electric vehicle instructors to teach the classes. And, and we also visited the healthcare thing and saw the, you're not supposed to call them dummies, but I can't remember what you call them. You know, the, the things that the, that they practice on? What is, mannequins, mannequins, there you go. Okay, so, and I'm thinking to myself, all of this is so expensive. Where does the money come from for those kinds of things?
So that's an excellent question, Ms. Davis. And I can try to see what I can answer in that space, but I'm thinking that might be maybe a future work session for workforce programs, because that's really what those would be. Especially for the larger programs or the launch of a new program, and especially an expensive program, I think our hope and desire is always to partner with a company or somebody like that who needs those workers that would help provide some of that equipment for us to be able to use and train their future employees, our students, on the equipment that they need to be able to use. So in many of those high-dollar spaces, that's an effort we try to put forth. And Glendale, for instance, has had a huge relationship with, I think it's Ford, if I'm not mistaken, where we've had great allies there in trying to make sure that we're providing the curriculum that they need, as well as the equipment. So the, the difficulty with those is, as you've observed, they're very expensive programs. So when we talk about, you know, needing to fund or needing to create new programs, especially in the workforce space that requires that kind of investment, we can look at various options we have. We could look at Prop 301 dollars, we could look at Prop 207 dollars. We can look at state STEM funding for that kind of activity as well. I think we have a few different ways we can look at it. We just need to be very creative. And, you know, for years and years and years, we had plenty of resources to do whatever. We should have always been, in many cases, we did. But even more so today, we need to make sure we're leveraging those partnerships and not necessarily taking all the burden onto us, and potentially, in some cases, having to pass that cost on to the students as well. So I don't know if that was a great answer for your question, but that would be my perspective.
No, that was a great answer. Thank you very much. I, I just kept thinking, if the public could see how much these things cost, maybe they wouldn't be complaining when we ask for money. So, so thank you. That was very helpful. And I remembered all three of my questions. I'm pretty proud of myself.
Fabulous.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Ms. Bittersmith?
Thank you, President Sullivan. I had to write my questions down, because I would not have remembered them. But let me start with a couple of follow-ups to questions that have already been asked. I, too, would be very interested in seeing the marketing budget specifically. And thank you, Ms. Smith, for asking about that, because I think that drives other initiatives and things that we're doing. Secondly, President Sullivan asked about the 1% budget reduction, which the amount in the whole scheme of life is not significant. But let me ask you, is, is that, is that realistic? Is there an opportunity going forward for that to be more anticipating what could happen with this marketing budget being spent correctly to increase enrollment, et cetera, et cetera? Or is that, is, is that what we think is, is most reliable?
Thank you for the question, Ms. Bittersmith. So I, I do think that the 1% is doable. Everybody's working on it, working on their reductions. One of the things that we're trying not to do in the college space is to just do 1% across-the-board reduction, because that, that exacerbates some other issues that we have. So that's in discussion now with a sub-team of ABC. So we'll see where that work ends up going. I think, I think it's important for us to try to do everything we can to meet in the middle. So we have increased tuition on our students. I think it's incumbent upon us, then, to put our best foot forward, which is to look at where can we do some reductions. Keep in mind that we have the 1% reduction, but we also have built into there the $25 million of increased expenses in the Compensation Plan. So, so for me, it's all the pieces need to come together. So I think we can manage the 1% reduction. We'll look at the marketing aspects and try to get, again, a little bit creative about where we can look for additional resources, if that's the decision of the direction that we need to go in. And we'll look and see what we can pull together for that. So I, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to look at the 1% reductions in continuing along that path at this point in time.
And then, thank you. My final question, and we've had this conversation before, I believe, and I noted that you mentioned the reserve fund percentage is, I think, unusually low. And so, and I'm used to looking at corporate reserve funds of significantly more in a percentage-wise. So this does make me a little nervous, although I recognize we have a Prop 207 reserve fund separate from what's here. Do you, can you provide us going forward with some potential comparables? And I realize it would be for other academic institutions, not from, for profit entities. And, and potentially think about going forward how we can be more realistic. Honestly, we, we survived the pandemic, still operating under this or directive of this percentage. But it does make me concerned that we, we may not be as prepared as we should be if we had yet another disaster. So I just would like some background information on what other, what other districts or other entities academically might be doing.
Absolutely, Ms. Bittersmith. One thing I can share is, we had done some of that research a while ago. I think it's becoming more the norm in educational institutions. I was going to say government, but I'm not sure it's the norm in government. I think it's more of the norm in educational institutions to look at having that financial stability reserve. And I know, for instance, some of our sister districts have started to implement policy around reserves and have reached out to me for what our policy is, for instance. So, so I know that there's an effort out there. When we did the research, we looked at various advisory groups, if you will. So we looked at GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association. And the closest thing we could find was a recommendation on three to six months of expenditures as your reserve. So that is part of the reason why we talk about the 16%. We're very careful to say, and it's about two months of expenditures. So, you know, there, there certainly could be an effort to try to build that up. I think we're in the environment we're in right now that's a bit challenging for us to do, because, of course, it's taking resources and putting it to that line item instead of other types of expenditures. But we can renew some of that research and see if there's anything else that's out there. But I think industry standard's probably going to be the three to six months. And, and just for some additional context, you know, when they speak about that, they also talk about if you have larger facilities, if you're decentralized, if you have older facilities, you're probably more closer to the six-month range than you are the three-month range. So which, of course, I'm going, okay, that's even, even more, because that would define us as an institution. So, but we'll renew that effort and get some more information out.
And again, not advocating, we change it, I just think we ought to know what the, what the norm is.
May I interrupt for just one moment on that? Also, given that we're working with the legislative agenda, one of the things they do look at is our percentage of reserves. And the higher our percentage of reserves, the more we're penalized. So as much as I, I hate to say that, as we're going up against some activity around the EL, if we were in the closer to the 4% range or any of that, I can, we're dead in any conversation over time. So that's been our experience. Not to say that has to be it going forward, but that is another reason why the EL conversation needs to happen. We need to get that done so that we can then come back and talk about are bonds important? Another issue, how do we look at our reserves and building that up within a reasonable amount? And in a conversation I was with in a bunch of higher institutional leaders, I think the average we were talking about was usually about 3%. Or, yeah, three months, sorry, not 3%. So that may be a target, but then we become another target. So that's the balancing act here. Though I do appreciate your question, and thank you for answering that. And I, and again, understanding that, I just think it would be helpful for those of us that are going to be have to answering those questions. We understand what the norm, you know, what, what we are being measured against in the marketplace. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to go down to the other end of the table. Ms. Butler, you're new to the, the budget, so maybe you have something? Or do you want me to postpone that after we go through Dr. Noreen? Your choice. Okay. Well, it won't be better. They'll just be asking questions. Okay. Dr. Noreen?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thanks for keeping all those plates spinning. I mean, this is remarkable. And I think you, in addressing Ms. Smith's questions, I think you answered mine. Intuition and fees in the general fund, we're keeping it flat at 164.2. And then in the auxiliary, we're showing a decrease of about, about a half million. But I'm, I'm in fee mode today. We're asking for a half million dollars in fees tonight. And, and I'm sure that come fall, or come spring, we're going to ask for another half million or so. And that, and you said that the tuition and fees does, does include the course fees. And just wondering if, if, if we need to consider all that?
Thank you, Dr. Noreen. And I don't have an answer to that question. So I'll go back to our team and find out where the tuition number, tuition fees number came from. I believe it is based typically on historical information. And certainly, enrollment would play a role in that. However, as you very well know, fees in the course fee space, we can look at enrollment, but it doesn't necessarily help us figure out what the course fee revenues are going to be, because they're different for each class, I mean, as you've noted. So this is probably an area that the, the numbers are probably as good as we can get them to be. And in the auxiliary area, what we do is, whatever comes in can be spent. So the general fund doesn't really work the same way. The general fund is, here's an allocation of expenditure budget. You can spend up to your expenditure budget. The auxiliary fund is far more cash basis, dare I say. So if you have, so, so you could have a budget, you could have a plan, as you see in the, the course fee request, that we plan on having 50 students pay this fee. Well, if you only have 45 students that enroll and pay that fee, you only get to spend the 45 students' worth of fee. You don't get to spend the 50 students' worth of fee. So all of that work is predicated on what comes in as to defines what goes back out. So this would be another area that, in this budget line, we likely have some additional capacity in there. So that if we do have an uptick in enrollment in a specific place that has course fees that we didn't necessarily know we were going to have, we're still well within the adopted budget and wouldn't need to come back to the board for approval to exceed the budget. So, so I think that they're going to, my, I think their answer is going to be, we base it on history, and then we look at, you know, should, do we think it's going to be slightly up or slightly down? And that's what hits the budget. But it, it's likely more than what will actually come in.
Okay, yeah, and I guess for me, it's just coming from a different mindset that our, all of our estimates should, should, I would hope, align. So the, the estimates that the, that the departments are saying this is what the fee increase is going to generate, and then what we're anticipating in, in this budget should hopefully, you know, at least come into a little bit closer alignment. You know, because again, half million, half a million dollars here, that's not reflected here at all. That actually was showing a half-million-dollar decrease in, in the tuition and fees. So I, I, I guess, you know, that's just my mindset. I just would hope that we could get those closer in alignment.
Thank you for that. I'll see what I can find out.
Thank you, Dr. Noreen. Dr. Thor?
Thank you. First, I want to make a comment on the Compensation Plan, particularly for the benefit of the new board members. That when we put the Compensation Plan in place, I believe it was for five years. And we believed at that time that by the end of five years, we will, would have closed the gap that was caused by not giving cost of, of living adjustments for those many years. Clearly, when we did that, we did not know we were going to have the inflation that we have right now. So I'm glad we're staying on course. But at some point, we're also going to have to address that we're not going to achieve the goal that we had set out and probably have to extend that plan for some additional years. I had a couple small questions. On Prop 301, would you remind me what the Phoenix College Institute is? Is that the tech center that's in their old downtown center? And how many years we're committed for the additional expenditure?
Dr. Thor, I don't think I can answer that off the top of my head. So I'll have to look that up and get back to you on that one. My apologies.
And I would have the same question. I think I've asked this in previous years. On the Maricopa Corporate College, how many additional years we're committed to support that?
Yes, you have.
And then my last question has to do with Prop 207. I recall that we have seen projections of the revenue that was expected to be generated by Prop 207. And my memory may be faulty, but I thought it was going to be significantly more than what you're showing here. Who's, who's, where are we getting this projection? Is it coming from this, from the state?
Thank you for that, Dr. Thor. Yeah, so it comes from some of the information that we can get. The original estimates, I believe, came from JLBC when we were talking about it. And I think I remember 26 million a year, because I remember saying, really, how are we ever going to get to $26 million a year on marijuana sales in Arizona? Low and behold, we're at 26-plus and probably 28 million for this next year. So there is a wonderful person in the Budget Office who keeps track of all of those estimates. And she's the one who puts together these numbers. And so it, it's based on a whole lot of different factors, both from the information from the state. The original estimates from JLBC, I believe, were built off of Colorado's numbers. So some of you have probably heard me saying, we used Colorado numbers for what? We're not, you know, Arizona's nothing like Colorado, only to find out again, we are meeting those estimates. So, so there is, you know, there's a little bit of an art to that whole process. But this is what we're anticipating for '24.
And how accurate has, has this person been?
She's been pretty darn close.
Okay, thank you.
So I have confidence in these numbers.
I'm just hoping, you know.
Yeah. Well, we were, you know, we had done all the, the projections based on everybody else's experience. And so we're very happy to have some details and data under our own belts for Arizona. And so, for instance, the very first year came in higher than what was estimated. But a lot of that, too, were new applications for licenses that we would not have in future years. So we were cautioned against using that to determine, you know, what your future might look like, because there were a lot of nuances in that first year. But so in year two, which really is '23, it started to calm down and settle down. So I don't know, you know, there were a lot of comments about what's going to happen having the Super Bowl here. Are we going to see huge increases? We'll find out. Those would be January collections. So we'll get that information, probably not this month, but next month, because there's usually a two-month lag in our getting the data. So we'll see if there's a bump. There's always a bump in Prop 301, for instance, when it comes to spring training season. So when we did 301, I started to learn a whole lot about sales taxes that I never really probably wanted to know in Arizona. But so those will be a couple of activities that, well, the Super Bowl, obviously, is, is a one-time every few years or so.
Well, I hope they all have a very good time.
And spend lots of money.
That's one way to phrase it. Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Thank you. Ooh, it's loud. Thank you, President Sullivan. Well, first of all, thank you so much for this presentation. Do I need to be that loud? My, my concern was the numbers that I heard you say about deferred maintenance. And I, I'd like to learn a little more about that. And I'd like to learn a little more about that. I know that, you know, we're managing to chip away at it a little bit every year, but obviously more things are also needing maintenance. So what are we seeing as the long-term projection for that?
Thank you, Ms. Butler. So when we first embarked on that and got the results of, you know, 300-plus million dollars and I know it was like 5,400 projects or something. The idea as it came to the board also to look at the funding source being the tax shift was really to look at it very longer, very much longer term and looking at it over a 10- to 15- to 20-year process. And, you know, we, as I said, we've prioritized everything to have the highest need and most critical need done first. And we did those in the first years of the program. And then every year it gets reevaluated, you know, did something change? You know, we had a project at, just as a hypothetical, we had a project at PC that we thought we would do three years from now. But guess what? It just broke and now we need to fix it or replace it or whatever. So we'll accelerate that up a year. So there's a lot of going back and forth and massaging of all of those 5,000-plus programs. But it was, you know, a 10- to 15- to 20-year plan. It's looked at as doing the 25 to, you know, probably about the $25 million range per year. That's probably as much as a system we could really accomplish without having to pay even more because we pay other people to manage activities, which isn't necessarily what we want to do either. So I think we're trying to very methodically step through all of the different projects that need to be taken care of. One thing that facilities planning and development has been able to do is they've actually been able to achieve some savings in some of the work that they've done. So if they needed HVAC replacements done at, you know, two places at one college and we had HVAC issues over here, they would do a single contract for all of those HVACs and get some economies of scale and make some good savings. So they ended up spending less in the first year and accomplishing even more than they had planned. So I think out of the gate that we probably should have, could have anticipated that that would happen. But as things level out, it will start to become a bit more routine and we'll be able to tee up those projects as they come about. So it's definitely longer term because what will also happen is as we go through those 10- to 15- to 20 years, you're going to have more projects that get added and need to get escalated as well. So we'll continue to go through that process. We really needed to have somebody objective come in and tell us what we were looking at, which is what this outside contractor did. And from that, that's really our launching point. And I think in many ways, we'll be able to go forward with that ourselves as a system and maybe bring in a contractor again, maybe in another 10 years to do another updated evaluation or something like that. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. That was helpful. And I have one more question. I know that the state legislature, I believe they cut all operational funding from Maricopa Community College in 2015, I think. And I wanted to find out where have the, where has the colleges now had to realize and where we had to react to those cuts?
So I think you're right on the 2015. Dr. Thor was nodding her head, so we'll go with that. The biggest cut was 38 million, which was probably that year. And then I think maybe a year or two later, we had about 7 million left and they cut that at that point in time. So Maricopa did it with a combination of things. One of the things we did was we did a $15 million expenditure reduction as a system. We did a smaller, we did a small increase in property taxes. That was probably about the time where we were generally maximizing our property taxes every year. So we would do a 2% increase on a pretty regular basis. But we, and then the other thing that we did is we did a small increase in student tuition. And off the top of my head, I can't remember what the dollar amount was, probably $2 or $3 a credit hour. So we tried to, again, kind of meet in the middle. And where we had that large reduction in resources, we did a cut, we did an increase to students, and we did an increase to taxpayers to kind of make up that difference.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. At the same time, then, the board that was in place, and I look at you, Dr. Thor, for this historical framework, too. They reduced tuition along the way. So we had boosted tuition. Go ahead.
I believe it went up $2 and then was cut back to $1.
So there were, and then.
In '19.
I believe that's right. It was just before I came on the board, I believe. And then the other piece is every year when we tried to look at taxes, we certainly had issues of what we might do with that discussion. So along with the legislature removing the dollars, people who were managing the fiscal sustainability of our district had a different vision for how that would play out. Did I say that diplomatically?
I would say in the years after that. I would say in the years after that, during that time, there was still a lot of stability. It was.
Yes, I'm not talking about the dollars themselves, but the strategies that were put in place that we weren't as assertive as we might have been in compensating for that.
Right. The strategies that were put in place or weren't put in place.
Correct. Does that answer? That works. That was diplomatic. Okay. I know we're approaching time. Mr. Burnett, I believe, came on and I, if he's still listening. I don't know else if he is.
I am still here.
There you are. All right, we have five minutes. Do you have some questions, Mr. Burnett?
No, I just have one quick one. I've been on since the beginning. I just had some communication. I could hear you, I just couldn't, you just couldn't hear me. But just a real quick question from Ms. Grignio. I think it was fantastic presentation. I was, I just want to know her philosophy, her thinking, or maybe the budget committee's thinking on moving forward with the new degree programs, the new four-year degree programs. Because in my mind, I'm thinking, obviously, there's cost and not just for the programs themselves, but for faculty and probably some staff as well. But retaining faculty to support these programs and as we go from the seven or eight programs we have now to maybe 10 or 12 in the future, is that kind of allotted for or thought about? I'm sure it is. I just kind of know what your philosophy or what the board, the budget team's philosophy is on that to maintain those programs as we grow them in the future.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Burnett. So that's a very good question. I think as a system, so first of all, we have dedicated a portion of Prop 207 for the launches of those four-year degree programs. And we have guaranteed supporting those programs for the first two years. Part of what needs to happen as part of a new economic model for Maricopa is how do those resources then get to the areas that are providing that coursework? And everybody also knows that we are, we did approve an increase in tuition of, or a tuition rate at 150% of basic tuition for those courses as well. So how do we get those dollars out to the colleges that are offering? So I think the difficult space that we're in right now is we still have no idea what those programs are going to look like. We have seven that are launching in fall of '23. Enrollment opens in six days, I think we're at, I heard this morning.
Yes.
So for priority enrollment and then on the 20th, so a couple of weeks after that. And so I think we're all very anxiously awaiting to see what happens with the four-year degree programs. But we're also somewhat cautious because we don't, we don't have any data. We have no way of knowing what the uptake will be on Maricopa's programs. So we're trying to very carefully and responsibly step through the process of deciding what degree programs are next and when. I think I could say another difficulty associated with that is it's a two-year process. So we're actually talking now about what needs to happen for the potential launch of fall of '25 programs. And we're trying to do that without any information about what's going to happen with the fall of '23 programs that we don't even know anything about yet.
Understood.
I keep saying it's like throwing darts and we're trying to figure out if we're even on the dartboard at this point in time. So, so I think, again, we're trying to be very methodical. We're trying to be very strategic. One thing we have learned is these are not going to be turnkey programs, if you will, that they just stand up. There are dollars that are associated with standing up these programs. And I, being probably on the conservative side, am like, can we wait just a little bit and see what happens with fall of '23 before we jump into offering, you know, five or six more programs in fall of '26? Or fall of '25? The other thing that we keep reminding ourselves of, too, is that we can always decide to stop at any point in time in that process. So if we start the work now to determine what we want to launch in fall of '25 and we end up not having things go the way we think they're going to go in fall of '23, we can always step out of that process. Or we can get all the way up to approval and then just choose not to offer it at that point in time. So we have to remind ourselves that there are off-ramps throughout the entire process. So it may not, you know, my conservative nature may not need us to stop now because we don't have data. But I want us to be very conscious and aware that there are off-ramps and we need to take advantage of those if we, if we need to and we find it's appropriate for us to do so. So probably not the best answer for you, Mr. Burnett, but it's where we are right now with a lot of unknowns.
No, no, actually, very good because you are operating with no knowledge of what can happen. So I expect that, that we have to take some order of wait-and-see attitude. But yeah, thank you for a very good answer. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Folks, we've been at this for an hour and a half and I think we owe Ms. Grignio some appreciation. Not only was the presentation very thorough, but your ability to respond to our questions is certainly appreciated. I know we have another go at this. The one thing I want to say to board members and also to the audience, in the past, there were always a small little committee, a couple of board members talking with Ms. Grignio as a budget committee. And then all of a sudden, a budget was put down in front of us and people had to vote or not. I think by expanding the conversation to all board members through a work session is very valuable and certainly allows us the opportunities to explore and understand the workings of our budget, which is extremely complex. There may be some lingering questions from board members as we go along. And I know that you are receptive to receiving those, Ms. Grignio. And they would go through Dr. Gonzalez's office to you and then an answer back. So board members, as you review this budget or you contemplate other questions, please do not hesitate to reach out because by the time we get to the April presentation, we want to be pretty solid with what we're looking at. So if there's anything lingering or if there's any accommodation you feel that needs to be made in adjusting this budget, Ms. Grignio, you and the AF, ABC, ABC are working on then keeping us in the loop with that information, I think could also be very beneficial to us. So again, want to thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Do you have any closing comments to today's work session?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Thank you, Ms. Grignio, for the great presentation and very informative. I would, I would just piggyback on your comments about the, how we are more transparent in sharing what the rest of the board through multiple iterations of this type of presentation that evolves over time. The other thing that has happened internally was the development of the ABC, which is a shared governance group that works on this year round. And this budget reflects the interest of many across the system. So it's to no surprise, and there's not a single administrator here and there shouldn't be anyone else here that's surprised with the numbers that we're seeing here. So I want to commend them for their work on this. And as we're wrapping up this year's budget, they already are going to begin working on next year's budget by starting off again with assumptions and some of those assumptions that you see here that are still unknown. So thank you for that. And we'll be sure to have some follow-up answers to some of the questions that weren't able to be asked immediately. But again, we appreciate the questions, the insights, suggestions, recommendations, and just your attendance to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I note that it is 6:30. I'm going to close the work session. I understand our responsibility to our audience, but I'd like to give folks at least five minutes to stand up, stretch, touch your toes, have a drink of water, do whatever. And I will try to bang the gavel in maybe six to seven minutes. So please do that. Thank you. Mr. Burnett, hang on.
No problem here.
All right, then, again, before I convene us, I want to remind everyone that we are live captioning our meetings. And again, to look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So at this time, I call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for February 28, 2023. Again, I will call all board members and I will start with you, our student trustee, Mr. Burnett.
I'm present.
Thank you. Ms. Bitter Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Norene.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor.
Here.
Thank you. With my presence, we have some board members, president and our student trustee. We're all here. Our next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I believe we have some students from Australia Mountain who want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's stand as they take the microphone.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll be looking forward to hearing from you in a few minutes. Thank you. We have some substitutions this evening. We have Ms. Joanna Schwartz, Vice President of PVCC, sitting in for Dr. Tiffany Hunter, President of PVCC, who's out of state at a conference. And we have Patty Curtis, Dean of Enrollment Services, sitting in for Dr. Enes Laura this evening, President of Landell Community College. So with that, we're going to leap into our student life reports. And we are very much looking forward to hearing from the Australia Community College leadership team. So please, again, back to the microphone and we're looking forward to hearing from you this evening.
All right. Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, and distinguished guests. My name is Andrea Lazzarevalo.
And I'm Kajana Hart.
And we are the student ambassadors with the Office of Student Life and Leadership at Australia Mountain Community College. And I'm happy to be here to give you a campus update on EMCC and to share the resources we offer. Next slide, please.
The Office of Student Life and Leadership provides an environment which fosters the social, academic, and professional growth and development of students. Student Life and Leadership is housed in the EMCC Student Union.
Next slide, please. Some of the services we offer are our student food pantry, the student clothing boutique, childcare assistance, discount bus passes, campus tours, and leadership development opportunities through co-curricular programs and civic engagement. Next slide. Oh, thank you. And then to expand a bit on our food pantry, our food pantry provides non-perishable food items for students twice a week as well as food boxes upon request. Prior to the pandemic, the pantry averaged over 2,200 student visits per year. This academic year, we have had 1,300 student visits. Additionally, Student Life partners with St. Mary's Food Bake to provide fresh food and produce to the EMCC community once per month by way of a mobile food pantry. The mobile food pantry has provided us with the opportunity to provide food boxes to 2,364 family members so far. Next slide, please. Okay, so the student clothing boutique we have is the Lines Exchange, where students can visit the boutique two times a month and receive up to four free items of clothing each visit. This is an excellent resource for students to use if they have a class presentation or a job interview coming up. They can come to the Lines Exchange and receive free professional clothing for these occasions. The Lines Exchange also offers a variety of personal hygiene items which are available for students to take for free. This year, we have seen a significant increase in the usage of boutique, of our boutique with 107 visits. Next slide, please. Currently, EMCC has 20 and more active clubs and organizations on campus. Some of the many clubs include our BSU, our multimedia MIT Club, Drama Club, Fashion Club, STEM Club, and our Future Teachers Club. I am Secretary of the Fashion Club and a member of BSU and Drama Club. Being a part of these clubs has developed my ability to time manage and I have become more culturally and socially aware.
I am the Vice President of the Black Student Union. And being a part of my club was a great opportunity for me because it helped me with my leadership skills, my public speaking, and finding a sense of community on my campus when I first started at EMCC.
Next slide, please.
So our past programs and events, some include our fall and spring. So our past programs and events, some include our Fall and Spring Welcome Week events. We also have our Fall Fest, our Hispanic Heritage Month, our Native American Heritage Month, our Holiday Angel Program, where we had 50 angels and helped 19 families. We also have our Student Appreciation Day, our Coffee Talk, our Holiday Reception, where we provided students with treats, coffee, and hot chocolate, our Student Success Fair, and our Black History Month.
All right, next slide. And then to expand on a few of our past programs, our Student Appreciation Day was created so Student Life could engage students in a manner which allows us to create and strengthen rapport, provide vital information in regards to student success, and increase student morale. Student Appreciation Day is held once per semester. We had over 400 students participate in our Fall Student Appreciation Day. Similarly, a Fall Fest was held in December to give students the opportunity to reduce stress and recharge prior to Finals Week, participating in outdoor games and activities in a relaxing atmosphere. Over 500 students participated in the new annual event. And lastly, our Sessar Chavez Luncheon was held in October to celebrate the triumphs of civil rights activists, Sessar Chavez, and give students the opportunity to learn more about him through our guest speaker, Arturo Othon.
Next slide, please. So our upcoming programs and events include our Women's History Month, where we will have our Women's Luncheon this Thursday at 12 to 1:00 p.m. with guest speaker Tanika Brunson, who is the Executive Director of the State of Black Arizona. We also have our Spring Fest and our Coffee Talk, which provides an opportunity for students to engage in dialogue with our EMCC President, Vice Presidents, and Deans. Our Coffee Talk is an opportunity for students to voice their questions, comments, and concerns with our administration. We also have our Finals Week of Champions, our Clubs and Orgs Olympics, our Mobile Food Pantry, our Student Appreciation Day, and our Gradapalooza, which is March 7th and 8th. And it's a pre-graduation celebration ceremony for students consisting of representatives from university transfer, Honors and PTK, Alumni Association, and Student Life. The Student Life wig for the academic year is to have 3,000 participants for our programs. The lead is to produce a minimum of eight in-person programs and activities per semester. To date, we have produced 14 programs and events in person with 2,191 participants.
And next slide, please. And finally, athletics. As of February 2023, the EMCC student athletes had retained a 100% fall to spring retention rate. The 2023 golf season is underway, and EMCC has eight members on the men's team, led by head coach Jimmy Contreras, and six members on the women's team, led by head coach Jeff Thurston. The 2022 men's team finished as the NJCAA Division One Team Runner-Up, qualifying as a team to compete at the NJCAA Division One National Championship in Odessa, Texas. Women's golf team member Abigail Werner qualified for the NJCAA Southwest District Championship held in West Worth Village, Texas. Both the men's and women's team achieved academic All-American status, with the men's team having the 15th highest GPA in the country at 3.44 and women's team having the 12 highest GPA in the country. Both teams are actively competing to qualify for the 2023 NJCAA National Championships.
Next slide, please. This concludes the Student Life Report for Australia Mountain Community College.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We're always excited to hear the students' reports. Sounds like you have a very active, wonderful campus. Dr. Rivera, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the Faculty Executive Council Report. Dr. Camille Newton, welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, President Sullivan, Governing Board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC members, guests, and colleagues. At the recent Governing Board Retreat, we discussed the commitment of Maricopa Community College District to shared governance and identified instances of effective shared governance at work in our district. The Residential Faculty Agreement Revision Process was cited as one such example. And given that the RFA will be coming to the Governing Board in the next month or so, I thought it would be an ideal time to review the shared governance process that it used and recognize those who have worked so hard on the policy document this year. There you go. Thank you, Elsa. One key part of the shared governance approach is the composition of the team that works on residential faculty policy development. The team is called the Residential Faculty Administration Collaboration Team, or RFACT. That's an ungainly title that nevertheless accurately describes one reason that the work is such a shining example of shared governance. The team itself is composed of both faculty and administration representatives. They are charged with working collaboratively to identify and address the interests that are collected from stakeholder groups across the district. So you can see on the slide, there are four faculty members. They represent both instructional and service faculty. They self-nominate, and then they are recommended to serve by a subcommittee of the FEC, I'm sorry, Faculty Executive Council, which then votes on that recommendation. The four administrative members represent the key stakeholder groups who are involved in the interpretation and the implementation of the Residential Faculty Agreement. They are selected to serve by their respective offices or councils. So Patty Spinkenstat represents the Provost's Office. Stacy Smith represents the Office of Human Resources. Greg Peterson represented the President's Council. There you are, Greg. And CJ Worster represented the College Vice Presidents of Academic Affairs. So in addition to those representatives, RFACT will occasionally call other experts in to provide their expertise as it is needed. So this year, Kim Grino was asked to come and visit with RFACT at least once, and we were regularly joined by Vice Presidents of Academic Services Representatives. We either asked them to join us, well, not me, RFACT asked them to join them, or the other way around. This year, the three primary FOCI for RFACT were bifurcation of the adjunct faculty and residential faculty policy language. That was in order to meet the Governing Board's charge to separate the two teams and provide each with its own documents. So that's one. The second, addressing issues with the 25 load limit and its effects on supervision alignment to Governing Board Policy 2.7, which specifies internal equity, market alignment, and fiscal responsibility with respect to compensation. Finally, clarifying the language in the document after its first year of existence, after the abrupt dissolution of the Residential Faculty Policy, or RFP. Going forward, RFACT will gather recommendations in the spring from stakeholders and determine the scope of work for the following year. This allows the work to continue during the summer. As part of their work, RFACT can request subcommittees or charge subcommittees to research and provide recommendations on issues that require additional research and work. Such was the work of the 25 Load Task Force, also listed, ooh, back one slide for me, Elsa, just real quick. Such is the work of the 25 Load Task Force, who were charged with identifying recommendations to align to that Governing Board 2.7. 25 Load Task Force deliberately used the same composition approach in order to ensure the commitment to shared governance. So you can see the 25 Load Task Force was composed of the top line there are four faculty members representing faculty leadership, a representative from RFACT, and two faculty chairs, occupational and academic. And then that bottom line, Kimberly Britt, Patty Finkenstep, Bill Guerrero, Frank Wilson, represents administrative representatives from HRVPs, college presidents, and the Provost's Office. We also brought in Service Faculty Consultant Nancy Deegan to make sure that their interests were represented. These teams collaborated to address interests using interest-based negotiation with the diverse perspectives necessary to address those interests presented, and it happened at all stages of the work, from the very beginning all the way through. Now the next slide. Thank you so much, Elsa. I'd like to take a moment to thank the members of the 25 Load Task Force and RFACT for their commitment to the work and the process. And this slide shows exactly why I think so, and I know that's tiny type, but that's because there's so much stuff going on. Shared governance, when it's done well, means lots of listening, lots of meetings, and lots of willingness to reconsider and revise based on the feedback that is provided. In all, RFACT received, reviewed, and considered over 100 individual responses in addition to feedback submitted by senior councils and individual groups. The excellent results of this work are, number one, our adjunct faculty colleagues have their own handbook document, and issues related to adjunct faculty are thus removed from the Residential Faculty Agreement. And RFACT met with college faculty senators, college administrators, VP councils, the FEC council, and multiple interest groups from December 2nd through February 17th. And those meetings resulted in significant revision to the initial document so that interests could be addressed. I'd like to extend a special note of thanks to RFACT faculty member Nancy Deegan and staff project manager Jake Orman for the outstanding work that they did on the document creation and control. We all appreciate the significant hours and attention to detail that that work required. Faculty leadership looks forward to sharing the proposed Residential Faculty Agreement with Chancellor Gonzalez and with Governing Board members. We thank the members of the teams that developed the policy and their commitment to and work through shared governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go away. I have a question before you clap. You said you look forward to presenting to us, and I appreciate that. We'll look forward to hearing that. Do you have a ballpark time in mind after it goes to Dr. Gonzalez?
We, well, right now, the Faculty, the Faculty Executive Council is slated to vote on ratification of the document, that first step after the proposal, next Monday at 3:00. And then it can go from there, assuming it is ratified, it would go from there to the Chancellor. And then, once the Chancellor has reviewed, I believe it goes to the Governing Board. First read, I understand, is in March.
Okay. So then we'll work with Dr. Gonzalez to see that schedule, but I want to ensure that we're aware of what is coming. My next question is, do you anticipate us needing a work session for conversation? Or are you, or do you not?
My understanding is that you are very busy people. And I'm sorry, I should have been saying, I'm sorry, President Sullivan and members of the board, you are very busy people, and a work session is a tough time to get with y'all right now. I will say that it is 138-page doc, 138 pages, roughly 138 pages, redlined, a lot of redline, with a clean one so that it's easier to read, so that you can compare if you like. We are happy to come to a work session if you would like that. There will be an executive summary that will provide an overview that I think might be helpful. And we're also happy to answer any questions. And I say "we" as if I'm going to be the one doing it, and it'll be RFACT. But I'm happy to volunteer them to answer questions for you, should you have any.
So, well, Dr. Gonzalez and I will meet to talk about that after he gets the report. I believe that if there is some summary statement, such as your executive summary, that calls out those things that we might need to pay attention to, first read, could be adequate. I just wanted to ensure on behalf of everyone sitting here that if there's an intention to meet, that we could work through all of our busy schedules to get to that point.
Apologize, Bernie cheekiness.
And did I give that back?
I think you did.
Yeah, okay, then, we're good.
Okay.
So I think that's where we will stand, is that it's satisfied board members? Okay, so we'll proceed along the line, paying attention that our interest is to get this done for you by the end of March.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we can applaud her. Thank you. And now our presentation from our adjunct faculty representative, Mr. Paul Frank.
Thank you so much, Chairperson Sullivan, board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, distinguished Maricopa educators. Thank you for your time. The title of my presentation today is Maricopa County in the Spotlight. It captures February. We had the Super Bowl. We had the first lady of the United States of America come visit our campus. We have tons of concerts going on, and spring training is starting. So of the 1,000 things that happen in Phoenix every year, 9,500 of them are happening in the next three weeks. So, and I wanted to say, I'm really glad that we're live streaming the meeting. I would encourage anyone that was listening on livestream to invite someone to listen with them next time or come on down and visit us in person. A lot of good things are going on at this district. And the more you know about them, the better off we all are. So thank you about that. Chairperson Sullivan, you asked me last time when I said that we were very glad to be included in the executive search committees, that was great because you don't know every day get to talk to someone who's wearing $2,000 pants. So.
I wondered.
And you asked if there was such a thing as $2,000 pants. So, there is. Cuccinelli is your guy. He has a 2,700 pair of flannel trousers there. And then there's a leisure fit with pleats for just $2,000. And then there's Prada for $5,000, but I don't know if wearing the more modest Cuccinelli's would be better if you were at a job interview or not. So.
I'm expecting Dr. Norene to come next, dressed in the orange ones.
They're nice pants.
Either that or you.
Well, you know, that brings me to our next one slide, please, if I could. We're having the adjunct faculty awards, and we've already decided on what we're giving out. We're working with MCLI to provide awards and outstanding recognition for 30 out of the over 3,500 outstanding adjuncts working at MCCD. So that's three per campus, three at each of the 10 campuses, less than 0.1%. I will be right here in this room on April 28th with a banquet and awards dinner. It's going to be great. We're going to have photos and music and stuff. And I have to thank all of the college presidents this month for helping to spread word and assisting us in the nomination process. In fact, if I could just take a moment to point out one or two, I'd still say all of them. I mean, it has been universal that they have just been helpful and very enthusiastic in helping us get the word out about nominees. So I really appreciate that, and I think we're going to have a robust field for our campus representatives to choose from when they do nominate the three outstanding adjuncts from the faculty. I didn't want to have it where we had three slots open and there was nobody to receive the award. And I wanted it to be as robust as possible, and we're a long way on that. So that's going good. I think just getting nominated kind of makes you feel good. So I think that's important. I also have to thank Gail Hayes for all her help and advice, not only in this initiative, but also going out and giving presentations on the different tier structure. She has really continued to just help our association in every way she can, and I really, really appreciate that. So thank you to her. I want to call that out. Next slide, please. Elections. Our elections are scheduled for April. We will have a full slate of folks come, starting in July, fully staffed organization. So that's going to be great. Recently, adjuncts at Paradise Valley and South Mountain Community College have stepped up. They're serving in the organization in an appointment point of role until they can get elected by the larger board. And I did want to thank specifically Dr. Hunter and Dr. Daniel for their assistance there. So we're, again, firing on all cylinders. That's very important to me. I think that you got to have the guys that you're supposed to have. So that's going great. Next slide, please. Support. I'm also very pleased to report that we, last, last, I thanked Dr. Kelly last time for opening a direct channel of communication with our employee group. I want to say that I'm pleased to report that we continue to receive very strong support from the organization. I'll be meeting with people just tomorrow and over the course of the next two weeks that it just wouldn't have happened, I think, a year ago. So that's fantastic. That's really, really, really nice. I'm also pleased to report that we've been included in initiatives with the Staff Representation Employee Group. We're having, and I'm surprised at how fast that's moving, really. I mean, that's great. You know, we're going to have the adjunct faculty corner in the staff newsletter coming out announcing the awards. So, or announcing the award nomination process. So we're going to get even more. And the Human Resources Department, also in the larger newsletter there, announced the awards. So I think, again, we're going to get a very robust field of candidates. And it's making a big splash, and I really appreciate that helping. Those are things that are going to continue going forward. It just so happened to start helping us out with the adjunct faculty outstanding awards. And that's just, you know, how many of those things kind of come together for you? It's pretty good, man. So anyway, that's going on, and I appreciate that. And I have to say, too, that we have the most to gain from these partnerships, okay? I want to recognize that our partners are serving the larger interests of the organization when they're inviting us to to make our place at the table a little stronger. When someone says, hey, I want to, you know, we can make something happen here, and you're the one that benefits more than them. That's great. So big thank you to those two groups specifically for helping us out. That's the way it should work when you put the larger interests of the organization above your own. So fantastic on that front. So fantastic on that front. So, next slide, please. As many of you know, we were included in the recent board retreat activity. We had a very important shared governance discussion that was better and more true to form because of everyone who was in the room. Not because we were there, certainly. I mean, I'm hit or miss at best at that stuff. But that we were invited was really the cool thing, you know, and it was an important thing that we had. So I really appreciate that as well. Just enough said there, I think. And then, next slide, please. My pitch for expertise of adjunct faculty, I just wanted to say adjunct faculty members, we have 3,800 people hanging around that have demonstrated loyalty to our organization. They have a wealth of experience. A lot of our guys experience living the subjects they teach. We're not reading about it, we're doing it, and then we're teaching about it. So that's something you got to realize. You know, the guy teaching about Jack London isn't just reading books and going to seminars. He's out there sailing, right? You know, going up to Alaska and stuff like that, and then coming back and telling everybody about it. That's pretty cool, you know? So I think that's important. But most of all, adjunct faculty have a willingness to help the organization. So if there's stuff around that you guys need us to do, I'm sure you would find a willing group if you kind of targeted outreach to adjunct faculty members in your different hiring processes and stuff like that. And with that, I thank you so much, and welcome any questions.
I don't believe there are any questions for this evening, but I want to thank you very much for your presentation. And you're always welcome at our combined events. Adjunct faculty are, after all, part of the institution.
Right on. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. We now have a staff representation report, and there they are. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. I am Shannon Monti, and my partner here, Calvin Duvall. We are here before you as the co-presidents for staff representation, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, and guests. Here's our presentation for the month. It's going to be a very exciting celebration for a lot of folks. Next slide, please. It is February 28th, but we would like to honor Black History Month. And even though it is February 28th, we still want to honor, celebrate, and learn all that we can that was given this month. Thank you to all the colleges that hosted events, learning sessions, et cetera. They also created websites. You'll see screenshots here from Mesa and Paradise Valley Community Colleges. These websites highlight historical figures, employee spotlights, student clubs, Black-owned businesses, books, videos, scholarships, and even previous year celebrations. So I encourage everybody to go to your college websites and continue to learn and grow, and continue to celebrate Black history. Next slide, please. As most of you are aware, every year there is a League of Excellence Awards put on by the League of Innovation. The League of Innovation has been dedicated to informing, inspiring, and celebrating innovation in learning, teaching, staff development, and student success for over 50 years. Since 2012, we've been recognizing outstanding faculty, staff, and leaders in the community college field. The reason these two folks are highlighted on your screen is they are also staff representation and have been integral parts and growing staff voice across the system for the past few years. Gateway Community College, please celebrate Mario Salinas. PVCC, please celebrate Josh Moss. They will receive the awards at the conference in Tempe on the weekend of March 11th. I believe the ceremony is March 14th. I also encourage everybody who's in the room and who's listening to click on the link in our presentation, which is in the board book. There are over 20 MCCD leaders, staff, and faculty who have been nominated and will be receiving this award. Congratulations to all of you because of folks like you that our students and our organization is successful. Next slide, please. Our next slide is to celebrate the 2023 Woman of the Year, Dr. Kate Smith, who is in the room, if you guys would like to cheer. Elza, can you scroll up just a little bit so I can read my bottom paragraph? Thank you. Arizona Women in Higher Education is committed to improving the general climate and professional environment for women by identifying and developing leadership, advancing and connecting and supporting women in higher education throughout the state. When I found out that Kate Smith had won this award, I immediately signed up. I encourage any woman who is part of Maricopa to sign up for this organization. To register to be a member is free. There's a lot of free events that you can attend, as well as conferences. You could use your professional growth dollars to attend. I'm really excited to be a part of this. Kate Smith has served as the sixth president of Rios Lotto College with nearly 30 years of experience in education. She's highly regarded and an enthusiastic leader who advocates for student success on all levels. Dr. Smith understands the barriers that non-traditional students face and is dedicated to making education affordable, accessible, and equitable. You can read more about her on that link on our slide. And just as a little side note, if you all know, Dr. Thor won it in 2017. Congratulations. I am now turning the presentation over to Calvin.
Thank you, Shannon. We'd also like to congratulate our own Dr. Stephen Gonzalez. He is the recipient of the 2023 Diverse Champions Award. The Diverse Champions Award recognizes higher education leaders who have shown unwavering commitment to equal opportunity and access for all, particularly in community colleges. The award will be presented to Dr. Gonzalez during the American Association Community College Annual Conference in Denver, Colorado, in the beginning of April. Congratulations, Dr. Gonzalez. Next slide. This month, we're going to be highlighting our representatives from Mesa Community College. Our non-exempt reps are April Roland, who's also the senator from Mesa, Christina Green, who is also non-exempt. Our exempt reps are Elvin Bridges, Cecilia Keyrose, and Warren Birkinson. Next slide. We also want to point out that staff representation is opening up self-nominations for the 2023-2024 term. Back in 2019, in the beginning, about exactly four years ago, the governing board gave a directive to the then-chancellor to create a staff employee group. From that directive, the EGOC Task Force was formed, and that task force made the bylaws, the structure, the framework of who we are right now. Both Shannon and I were on that task force. And once we stood it up, we rolled right into COVID.
Yep.
Yep. This will be our fourth term, and I just want to thank, first of all, the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, for all your support, and also especially every single staff member who has participated. Your participation is key and critical to shared governance and helping leadership understand the issues that concern us and to help us help the students. So thank you to everyone. Next slide. So, of course, if you have the presentation, here's some links, our website, our newsletter, and our email address. If you have any questions, you can always email myself and Shannon. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing that struck me this evening, Dr. Gonzalez, as we've been listening, and board members, as we've been listening to the faculty executive report, the adjunct faculty report, and now the staff report, is the comments about shared governance. I don't think I've ever had a board meeting where it's been so integrated into your reports, your comments, and your investment. So I think it's speaking volumes to how we're all walking this journey together in a shared governance model. And so I offer congratulations to all of us, board included, for putting this at the forefront of our work together. So, thank you. It just struck me as I've been listening. Dr. Gonzalez, would you put your thoughts on that?
Thank you, President Sullivan. I would absolutely agree. We've come a long way over the last few years in putting shared governance at the forefront of how we would engage with one another to do the important work that we do in our system. So thank you for that acknowledgement. It doesn't always, it's not always easy and doesn't always come natural. But given patience and persistence through the process, in the end, it really does pay off.
Yeah, I think it takes practice. So thank you all for that. So, excitingly, now we're moving to our emeritus, is that a word? English majors? Yeah, okay. Tonight, we have one emeritus recipient, Mr. Jaime Herrera. He was recognized in our January meeting, but he was not able to be with us at that meeting. So I know, Dr. Robinson, you are here tonight to present him his award, and we invite Mr. Herrera forward to hear what he also has to say. Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Welcome.
This is wonderful. So wonderful.
Board Chair Sullivan, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Gonzalez, our CEC, and our public. I want to thank you again just for a point of grace. My office was new to this, and Jaime, you were the first person at Mason for me as new president to give you an emeritus award. And so we forgot to call you. So, so we get a redo. What I'd like to do is, before I read a statement, let me read the statement real quick. But we also have Eddie Webb, who's here, who's going to join me. And he actually did a video regarding Jaime's work for Mesa and the district. And I just wanted, again, just to point, just to watch this for a second, if you guys don't mind. Can we play it just to talk about his? You've all heard it before, but let's hear it one more time with Jaime here. Here we go.
My name is Jaime Humberto Herrera Montero, and I'm an English teacher at Mesa Community College. To think about these stories and think about what these stories mean and what these stories mean specifically in relation to Chicago culture. I was born on the American side. I was born in El Paso, Texas. But I grew up on the Mexican side of the border, in Juarez, obviously. Nací en El Paso, soy estadounidense, de nacimiento, pero crecí en México. When I think about who's inspired me, I have to think in terms of whole people. Specifically, it would have to be my parents. And they've taught me to go past my struggles and to keep learning and to focus on education. You know, I think of my own family, my wife, my kids. They inspire me every day. I think of my students. My students, you know, they inspire me. My students are great. The stories they have. They always tell me they have nothing to write about, but as soon as they start writing, they tell wonderful stories. What I love most about being in this classroom is just the energy that the students give me. Obviously, they take a lot of energy, but they also give me a lot of energy. When I was working at the district for two years, and I wasn't in the classroom and I wasn't on campus, I missed that. I really like engaging students one-on-one in a classroom. And that's my favorite part of teaching, just walking into that classroom. I graduated high school in El Paso, and we had just moved to El Paso from Juarez. I attended the university there locally in El Paso and then pursued my master's degree at UT Austin. And that was a bit of a culture shock for me, but it really reinforced the fact that I loved language. And eventually, from there, I started teaching. I've been teaching for close to 30 years now. It's a running gag in the department that I use Sandra Cisneros for every single one of my classes, and it's not far from the truth, because it's a small novel, it's very approachable, but there's a lot of material we discuss in terms of the culture. In terms of being a student on the border and my ability with language, again, very unique experience. I learned English when I was six years of age, and I never struggled with English. I never struggled with Spanish because it's my native language. One of the reasons why I wanted to teach, because I love language. In many ways, I'm still very, very ethnically Mexican. After a few years at MCC, a couple of colleagues approached me, and they wanted to know if I spoke Spanish. And of course, I impressed them with my Spanish. They both retired, and I took over the program, and I lead that program to this day. And it's one of the things that I really enjoy doing, because I take students to Mexico. And we had one year, he had a roll of toilet paper with him and bottled water because he'd heard that Mexico didn't have bottled water, and you shouldn't drink the water. That was 15 years ago. I saw JR a couple of weeks ago, and we were remembering that, and we were laughing about it. And then after a few years, I developed, with the help of people from the district, a faculty development program. So I take faculty there. But just like anybody else, they have these conceptions of Mexico. A lot of them have never even been across the border. So I take them to Mexico, and that's also a lot of fun for me, to take them to Mexico and show them Mexico City, which is one of the greatest cities in the world, and show them Guanajuato, which is a very small colonial city with wonderful people and a wonderful university, and we have wonderful partnerships. And I enjoy that, too.
Let's give the colleges. I went to say something, and then Eddie?
Thank you. That was, Eddie, seven, eight years ago? There's some stories behind that. We filmed it at a restaurant in Guadalupe, and we can't go back there anymore. At one point, Eddie asked me to go and ask the kitchen staff to keep it quiet because we had the mic on. So I went a couple of times. And next thing I know, I go back to Eddie, and he's like, what's going on? And all we hear is like, "I went to Chicago." So I said, Eddie, we have to go. We haven't been back since. And I was just telling my students this morning, because I have a face-to-face class at a university close by. And I told them I was going to miss them during spring break, and I was very sincere. I said, the best part of what I do, and I've always felt this, is walking into the classroom and seeing students and not knowing if what I've planned is going to work, or if there's going to be something better, sometimes worse. But it's a great experience, and I've enjoyed that all these years in Maricopa. And I'm appreciative of Maricopa giving me that opportunity. I'd also like to thank my wife, who's here, and one of my daughters is here. And my other two daughters couldn't make it, but they've always been supportive of me, and they've always brought a lot of energy and optimism and light into my life, and they continue to do so. I do want to say that, I was telling Tom that I'm failing at retirement because I'm still, I'm still very busy. Maricopa still reaches out to me. I think there's a lot of mutual respect and trust. So I'm still doing some work, thankfully, for Maricopa. So, and thank all of you for being here and for this honor. Thank you.
So, I've worked with Jaime for years. He was on my hiring committee. And that film we made when I was a student at Scottsdale Films. And so it's horrifying. I'm watching it now. Like, we got in there, we started filming, and we got in early. And the owner came in and turned on a DVD box. I didn't know how it was baked in there. It was a whole thing. And, but anyway, my brother here, I am Ktuu, a member of Ktuu HCC in Oklahoma. And I was raised in our Indian community. My father is Ktuu, my mother is Nanga, which is white. And, you know, in our way, in our culture, when people have a milestone in their life, we give them a blank. And the reason we give these a blank, it's kind of like the Medal of Honor in a way. And nobody gets out of Mesa without scars, bruises, and lumps, you know? And Jaime has done that with dignity. He's been a mentor for me. He's lasted 30-plus years at Mesa with the love of his wife, the respect of his children, his community. He's always put his students and his community before his professional achievement. And to me, he is what happens when a teacher becomes an educator. And it's a remarkable thing. And so we had a bigger thing planned for Jaime. We're going to have a drum and elders, and medical things happen in a kind of last-minute sort of thing. I'm really not old enough to do this, but I'm going to give it my best shot. And so we're going to put this blanket on Jaime, and I'm going to see if you were.
Thank you, Eddie. And it's an honor. And I have worked together for a long time. When I served on his search committee, he said, when he walked into the room for one of the interviews, he said he laser focused on him. He said, Jaime, you was the only person of color in that room. And right away, he just locked on me, and I was like, hey, look at them. And we hired him, and, you know, he's been a great hire. Art Jarrett's here also, Greg Pickers, and he's been very supportive. And I commiserate with Eddie because we've often talked about being in between two cultures, and how sometimes that can beat you up. But it's a really wonderful space in which to exist because you can access both cultures and go back and forth and get the riches of both of what I can and what we all can. and get the riches of both of what I can and what we all have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, Jaime Herrera, 33 years of service. Thank you.
Strategic Planning Committee, between the students and that presentation, I think you have your vision, right? Okay, moving on. Your turn, Dr. Gonzalez, Chancellor Rupert.
I don't know how you follow that one up. I really don't. Congratulations to you. And what a nice ceremony there to top that off. So thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board. Just a few updates here very quickly. The legislative session is in its seventh week, and our legislative parties are in progress. And our government relations teams are still developing a strategy for short-term expenditure limitation relief. After the bill to address the issue failed to get a hearing before the deadline, our dual enrollment bill, SB 1717, sponsored by Senator Kaiser and backed by the Greater Phoenix Chamber and Helios Foundation, has made progress in the Senate, passing out of two committees with strong bipartisan support. We will be looking for that to go to the floor for passage by the full Senate very soon. AC4 has set a meeting to discuss long-term strategy to address the fact that many districts, including us, Maricopa, will likely be up against their limits in the coming years. And we heard Ms. Grineau discuss that. The possibility of a statewide ballot referral and viable options for what the referral would entail would be discussed along with the possibility of districts pursuing county-specific solutions. And since our last governing board meeting, we were fortunate to host First Lady Dr. Jill Biden and Education Secretary Miguel Cardona at Mesa Community College to celebrate the Mesa College Promise Scholarship Program. Governor Hobbs and Mesa Mayor Giles joined us for the occasion, as well as myself, President Robinson, and members of our governing board were also in attendance. And it was an exciting day and a pleasure to hear from our students who were impacted by the program. In terms of enrollment, and students are at week six, our head count is up 3.5%, and our FTSE is up 4.8%. We're really happy to be on the positive there. Dual enrollment is actually up 17% over this time last year with just over 16,000 students currently in a dual enrollment course somewhere throughout the valley. And as was previously mentioned, before the work session here, we had a celebration to celebrate the accomplishment of a bachelor's degree, the work that was done by the leaders and of that team. And we thanked them and congratulated them and appreciated them in a really big way. And the Start Here, Finish Here campaign promoting this opportunity and its affordability through a wide range of channels to include email, social media, billboard, train wraps, radio, et cetera, et cetera, is being launched. And as was also stated, in five days, students will be able to enroll in a bachelor's degree program here in Maricopa. And that's 25 years in the making, folks. So congratulations and thank you to everybody involved in that. One of the opportunities that I don't get really often is an opportunity to sit down with students and just hear it straight from them, to give them an opportunity to share their experience with me and for them to learn a little bit about me as the chancellor in the Maricopa system. So we have scheduled a series of student town halls for the remainder of this semester, and that may need to go into the summer or into the fall semester as well. In a similar vein, we will also be doing the same with employees. But I'm happy to report that on Friday, we held the first student town hall. It was hosted by Estrella Mountain Community College. Student leaders and other students from Glendale College were also in attendance. So we had roughly 50 to 60 students. And I want to thank our student trustee, Mr. Burnett, who was at attendance with me and facilitated the conversation, interview-style with me in front of the students, and then facilitated the questions back and forth between the students. And so a really good opportunity and a really good experience for me to hear it directly from our students and talk about recharging the soul and a really healthy reminder as to why I get up every single day to do what I do. It was before my eyes, and I just really appreciated that opportunity. President Sullivan, that concludes my update. Thank you.
President Sullivan.
Yes, Ms. Smith. This is not really a question, Dr. Gonzalez, but given that five-day lead-up time, obviously, all of us are excited about this new opportunity. As you do your weekly updates, can you just make sure, I'm sure you're a Blue this anyhow, give us a report of what we're looking at in terms of enrollment?
Absolutely.
Because I think that'll be exciting, too.
All right. Sounds like a weekly snapshot assignment. I'm looking at somebody that helps him with that, Kathy.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing us up to date. So now we move to citizens interim, and we all know this is an opportunity for members to address the board. But in compliance with the open meeting law, we're not in a position to respond to or discuss any action or item discussed at citizens interim. I have two individuals who'd like to speak to us this evening. The first one is Ms. Monica Valerio. And if she is present, please join us at the podium. Please come to the front. I understand, Ms. Valerio, you're here to represent yourself and some community people. And so please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC, and guests. My name is Monica Valerio. I am a certified dental assistant, a student in Maricopa Community College, and a future dental hygiene student. The issue that I came here with today is to discuss the admissions of the dental hygiene program. There are standards that the Maricopa community colleges have, and I seem to keep running into walls and haven't found any answers. It has to do with the background checks. And the standard for the community, I mean, the Maricopa Community College, is that the background checks must not contain a conviction of DUI from... There are specific standards. It must only involve alcohol. And I just wanted to address this with the board to see if there was a bypass for that, considering some convictions were small and possibly 10 years ago. And it's holding students back today. Wonder if there was resource or somebody that I could speak to that would give me answers on how to move past that issue and continue my education towards that dental hygiene, especially since there's a four-year waiting list. And to wait four years and then kind of get blocked is a little upsetting. I just wanted to state that and possibly have some answers in the future if anybody can get back to me.
Thank you, Ms. Valerio, for your presentation. Is it concluded? I don't want to interrupt your time.
Yes, and it was very impromptu. So I'm sorry about the informality of it all, but I appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Again, we can't speak to the issue, but I could encourage you to reach out to Dr. Gonzalez's office, and I'm sure from there, someone could direct you.
Thank you so much.
Would that be correct, Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, President Sullivan. In fact, I've already asked Patina, our acting provost. Patina, raise your hand. She will meet with you here shortly.
Oh, thank you so much.
So perhaps the two of you could exchange contact information then and go from there.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Thank you, and thank you for being in front of us this evening. Our second presenter this evening is Ms. LaWan Pleasant. And please join us at the podium.
Hello and good evening, Madam President, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, family and friends. My name is LaWan Pleasant, and Happy Black History Month. It's the last day of the month. Four years ago, a week from today, last week, I was terminated after I filed my complaint of retaliation with the Office of EEOC. So what I've learned is that the Maricopa Community College is they hire attorneys. They hire attorneys at a high price to deter persons who have filed similar complaints. I've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages that I received from your ombudsman's office. So I'm here once again, and thank you for, Madam President, for allowing Ms. Falkenberg to speak with me and to try to resolve this issue sooner than later. And Ms. Kelly, how are you doing today? Good, because you're part of the problem, too. Looks like there's no oversight when it comes to human resources. And your EEO, they're all the same. They're all the same. I tried to file a complaint against Stacy Gabriel, who was the investigator. I filed a complaint with the Arizona State Bar Association. And they said, well, we can't do anything about her because she was acting as an investigator, not as an attorney. So that's how, one way that your customers or your complaints are filtered. So my next step, I was told, to file a complaint with Attorney General's office. And since we have a new Attorney General in office, perhaps they might want to look at this as far as misrepresenting herself as an EEO investigator. I contacted the EEO investigator, and they said the only person who can really do an EEO investigation is an EEO investigator. So I don't know where the community colleges are hiring these people at to do these different types of investigations violating my right to protected activity. So four years ago today, I was terminated. And I've stood before you guys each year. You all sit back with smiles like nothing's going on. Something's going on. You're depriving people of their right to protected activity, and you're paying people to make sure that doesn't happen. I'm not going for this. You'll see me every month, if it's a new president, a new chancellor, whatever. And Dr. Gonzalez, you're aware of it, too, because what happens is you have an employee that filed a complaint, and then you hire a law firm to dispute what it is they're saying. And then you have everybody behind the scenes working against the right. So I'm praying that the right will be done. I'm praying that the truth will be told, and that's my time. Oh, what did I say? And I think perhaps enrollment might be able to be increased amongst our students if you show truth and transparency. Okay, you can't get someone back if you push them away. When you cancel the football program, which opened opportunities for some of the students in the community, they said, I'm through. They don't care about me. You want my money? You're getting ready to increase tuition? You're getting ready to find a way to try to maximize the financial aid program? So and then I see that they've got students who are having to live from the food banks. That's not right. You know, the Maricopa Community College is the largest institution in community college services that I'm aware of. But yet instead, we raise intuition, have kids, students who don't have shelter. And I know that my three minutes up, so I'm praying for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pleasant. Moving through our agenda, we are now at the consent agenda. So I'd like to remind everybody that all items under this section are consent matters unless they're removed from the agenda at this time. Do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Dr. Narini.
Yes, I'd like to remove item 12, the approval of proposed course fees changes for fall semester fiscal year 2324.
Item 12.
Item 12.
Any other removals or comments from board members before I move into a motion? No other removals will remove item 12. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 12?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All those in favor of supporting the consent agenda as presented without item 12, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Mr. Burnett, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. And as we move forward now, the consent agenda stands approved. We'll move item 12 into our action item. So do I have a motion, Dr. Narini, on item 12 from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move that we accept the proposed course fees as is with the exception of ELR 133 from Gateway, SPE 477, and EDU 477 from Glendale, ARH 112, History of Modern Art, and ARH, I'm sorry, ARH 112 and ARH 115 from Chandler Gilbert, cosmetology classes, COS 106, 114, 116, 119, 212, 214, and the EST 110 and 115 from Gateway.
I couldn't keep up, so I hope someone else did. But with that, then, you've made the motion. Is there a second on the motion to lead us to discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We have a motion to approve with the exceptions noted and a second discussion. Dr. Narini, we'll start with you on the discussion, please.
Yeah, I'm taking a cue from the State of the Union on fees. First, I want to thank and commend all the faculty and staff and departments in all the work that they did to help bring down the cost with the fees and things that they've included, including Estrella Mountain's accounting and art programs. They did some work to reduce the fees. Gateway Econ and Business Programs, Glendale's Psychology Department, MCC's Vet Program, and Paradise Valley's Administrative Justice Programs have done some work with their fees to help reduce the overall cost for students. So for that, congratulations, and I commend you. But what I did see in reviewing all the fees is there's a lot more opportunities that we have to reduce the cost for students and their overall cost of attendance. And so I look forward to the task force or committee or whatever we're going to pull together so that we can start exploring some of these ways through books, through different ways that students can purchase books and so forth. So I look forward to that, and I look forward to the other ways that we can look at these fees and we can look at tuition and how we can help lower the cost for the students, the overall cost for the students, and the way it impacts their financial aid. Let's see, what else? I also want to thank all the faculty and administration for taking the time to provide the thorough answers that we requested last week or so with some very detailed and comprehensive answers to the questions. And from the responses, for the ELR 133 DC from Gateway, in the responses that they sent back, they asked that one to be removed. So that's why I asked for that one to be removed. And also, at the agenda review, when we discussed it a couple of weeks ago, Glendale asked the SPE 477 and the EDU 477 also to be removed, and they were still on there. So just want to make sure they was on there. Do we know if there was any other ones that needed to be removed from there? Okay. Okay, and as far as some of the other classes, the first one I wanted to go through was the first one on there, the ARH 112, the History of Modern Art, and the ARH 115, the History of Photography at Chandler Gilbert. In description, it says that we're asking for the increase of the fees to bring in experts to help the students attain the course learning objectives. And so first of all, I'm concerned that our professors, that our, make sure that our professors are capable of making sure that our students meet those learning objectives without having to bring in outside help. Secondly, I'm concerned that we're paying adjunct professors between $3,036 and $3,339 to teach an entire three-credit course, which is about a third of what we're asking this fee to pay for for an outside person to come in and give a guest speech. So it just doesn't seem fair to the students that I think the students should expect more for their tuition than having to pay extra for outside expertise than the professors are providing. So that's why I asked for that one to be removed because I didn't know how many sections that was, if it was going to be one section of 50 students so that we'd provide one honorary for one person for one class, or if there was going to be multiple sections, two sections of 25 students, so we'd have to pay the guest speaker multiple times. So I wasn't sure what that was. That wasn't included in the answers that I got back. As far as the cosmetology classes, and I think I gave everyone, all the board members... As far as the cosmetology classes, and I think I gave everyone, all the board members a list of the courses and the outlines and the answers that we got back, for the cosmetology courses, we are asking, it tells us that the cost of, of the supplies have gone up 12% to 20% in the industry, which is fine. I mean, inflation is inflation. But since 2019, 2019, there was no fee on cosmetology 106. We raised it to $75 in 2020 to 2021, and now we're asking to double that to $150 for the incoming year. Cosmetology 114 in 2019 was $50. We raised it, we doubled it to $100. Now we're asking for a 75% increase to $175. Cosmetology 116 is the same thing, $50 in 2019. 2020, we raised it to $150 by raising, so we raised it 200%, and now we're asking to raise it another 50% to $225. And let's see what else we got. The same thing for cosmetology 119, for 212, and for 214. We've increased that in one year to 200%. Since 2019, we're asking for a $350 increase from 2019. For the increase for this, this one year, we're asking for a 50% increase, even though the supplies have only gone up 12% to 20%. And the same thing for the, I can never say this word, esthetician classes, the EST 110. In 2020, we had the, our fee was set at $175. We're asking it to be raised by 87% to $325. Same thing for the 115 class. In 2020, 2021 is $175. We're asking it to be raised by an 87, 85% to 200, or raised it to $325. So, so those are the reasons I ask for those to be removed. I would, I would like to offer for Gateway to kind of either explain or give us an alternate, and I suggested an alternate, alternate fee for those classes that I think is a little bit more reasonable, between 20% and 23% for some of those classes. That's what I had.
Dr. Norene, I think you've explained your rationale for wanting those items removed. I would ask, Dr. Gonzalez, is there a way that we could move forward on the motion excluding those items and then prepare some reevaluation of those items that would come to us separately for approval?
President Sullivan and Dr. Norene, I would need you to defer to Bettina in terms of timeline here. I know that these are fees that we like to get posted as quickly as possible because they will be reflected in the, I don't know if it's, it would be anything summer after July 1st, 2023, and definitely for the fall semester.
And given that, while you're at the podium, so what solution could you provide us then, if we move forward on the motion, with the exception of those noted? So what solution could you provide us, given the timeline and the necessity to reach some accommodation and appreciation of what Dr. Norene has presented, so we can go, move forward with what has been presented to accept? And so timeline and next steps, would that work for you, Dr. Norene?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I, if this helps, I've put some suggested increases in so that they, the programs would get an increase, just not as much as they were, they were asking for.
In the weeds.
In the weeds, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I mean, that's just proposal.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure that they know what those are.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Ms. Sullivan.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So in regards to the ARH 112 and 115 courses being proposed by Chandler Gilbert, those are aligned with the semester start, so these are fees that are being proposed for fall of '23. If Chandler Gilbert does not get these fees approved on this, it would impact their fall schedule, which is opening in five days for registration, and we generally don't like to increase costs on a student once they've enrolled in the course because they're, obviously, it's not unheard of, but it takes an extra effort around the communication. So if there was an interest by the board in us following up on the question and bringing an item back next month, we could certainly do that, or else we could ask Chandler Gilbert to resubmit this in the fall submissions, which are in October. With regard to Gateways, cosmetology, and esthetician fees, I think I'm going to phone a friend with Dr. Diaz on any rationale around the increases, because those are large amounts of consumables that are associated with that. And so the amount of product in both of those areas, and they have provided a pretty detailed cost level analysis that we are happy to share. But please, Dr. Diaz, if you have anything you'd like to add. That one, we probably also have more flexibility as Gateway programs don't follow the traditional semester start, so we would have an opportunity to revisit that in April if that was something that would be of interest to the board.
Thank you, Bettina, and Dr. Norene, Ms. Sullivan, Chancellor Gonzalez. Yes, the clock hour programs for beauty and wellness, esthetician, and massage therapy are not locked into the semester timeframe like our credit hour classes, so we could certainly provide you some additional information. Since you asked about this at agenda review, those program managers and instructors have been working diligently behind the scenes to literally take all of the product, estimate out the consumption per student, and divide the total cost by student. And so that's why they didn't reduce the fees, because in fact, they are probably still undercharging for the consumption of the product and have not really been keeping up with the cost over time by not having regular increases. We also pay a laundry service, and it's a very expensive laundry service that we have for our sheets and our towels and capes and all of the things that would be associated with running beauty and wellness, esthetician, and massage therapy programs at multiple sites. We also have, you know, various sites across the valley. And lastly, the cost of shipping has also increased, and these are products that are heavy, in, just in terms of their weight. And so with shipping costs, with the increase in just the cost of inflation around these kinds of products, and the incentive to buy them in bulk to get the lowest price is part of why you're seeing the requests to keep the fees at their original requested amounts.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Because I did, I did do a little research, and the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics is telling us that for personal care products as a whole, from 2019, has increased by 10.7%. So there is that. But I also think, and I appreciate the point, and I appreciate the work that they're doing, but I, and I also think that as we start looking at the fees and as we start looking at the fee request, I think this is a good opportunity to revisit the form that we're using to, to ask for the request, so that I, we get the information that we need upfront, and we're not having to go back and ask for the question. Because, yeah, I don't doubt that these, these fees have increased and the, and the need for the students' program. It's just that when I look at it, what I'm, what I'm looking at with these requests doesn't match up with my cynical mind when it comes to this. And so I think, again, as we look, as we move forward with a task force or a committee on fees and course fees, we can, we can look at the way we request the fees and the request, what we're, what we're asking for, and the needs that would meet the faculty's standards.
Thank you, Dr. You. So going back to a solution, and in a moment, if there's not other board discussion, though there could be, I'm going to ask if you want to consider amending your motion in any regard. On the Chandler Gilbert piece, if it's a matter of time, you know, the board can always be convened with notice, virtually, to take a vote. So the idea that we're absolutely wedded for decision-making to only monthly meetings doesn't have to be the case if something demands that of us. And I believe I speak on behalf of all board members that if something surfaces of intense priority, then we are willing to step forward to do that. Now, in this case, we have the concern that's still lingering, and you've answered that about the timing for registration, which I sure, sure impacts what we would do moving forward. So I'm laying that out there. Board members, before I go back to Dr. Norene, or do you have any comments or any suggestions? Ms. Bitter Smith?
We, as we discussed in terms of committee assignments, I know there is to be a task force to look at the general philosophical approach, I think, is the, is the goal of the task force, as opposed to having the board members micromanage each individual fee. But I know that Dr. Norene is, and I agree with him, wants to look at the whole overall fee concept. That task force has not met yet or been constituted yet, is that correct?
I believe so. Dr. Gonzalez?
President Sullivan, Ms. Bitter Smith, I believe that that, that task force is set to meet immediately following spring break, is that correct? I see Dr. Jenna shaking his head as well.
Chancellor Gonzalez, President Sullivan, that's correct. We have the charge for the group, the scope for the work, and we'll be calling for representation to serve from across representative group immediately following spring break.
And I understand that would include a board member as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Okay. So, thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith, for your comment. Any other comments or questions, board members? Dr. Thor?
First, I want to thank Dr. Norene again for doing so much homework on this. I also, once again, want to express concern about the fact that we just received the responses to Dr. Norene's questions at approximately 1:30 this afternoon, and we were here for an event at 3 o'clock. I understand that sometimes you have difficulty getting the information from a college or particularly from a faculty member at the college. However, in the future, it would be helpful if you piecemeal the stuff to us. I would rather, you know, wait, have, have one course fee discussed the day of the board meeting, but to have had several other days to have reviewed this material and to have posed further questions that might avoid us being in this type of situation. That said, I want to ask a question about the History of Modern Art class. Do any other colleges in the district offer this course, and if so, do they charge a fee?
This is Dr. Thor. I do not know. I, that course is a standard course that is available to be offered across the district, so I'd have to get back with a response on what fee is being charged. If the fee has been proposed by an individual college, it's because that college is either increasing its individual fee or a fee currently does not exist.
Okay. And, and I have to tell you, I'm just a little unnerved, I guess, by the rationale, which basically says that the faculty member doesn't have the expertise to meet the course requirements, the course learning objectives, and that is the reason that we need to pay speakers to come to the class? That's, that's problematic to me.
So, board members, we have a motion on the table. We've had some discussion. Do we have more discussion on this item before either we ask for some sort of amendment or we vote on the motion, with the consideration that the board can act if we have to make accommodation by excluding the items around Chandler Gilbert and coming back?
President Sullivan?
Yes, Ms. Davis.
Would we be able to get the fee structure information earlier in the year somehow so that we're not up against this deadline like we are now?
I think that's something to be discussed in the task force and the committee and how this would play out in relationship to budgeting and, and course design and all of those other things. But thank you for that comment, Ms. Davis. I believe that's a correct answer.
President Sullivan, I would also like to bring up the fact that as we're talking about differential tuition, fees definitely should play a part in that, and so I think, I think we do need to have an extensive discussion about this.
Yeah, I think that's forthcoming, and one of the reasons we interrupted some of the differential tuition presentations is because we realized there were greater and broader elements to discuss. So, thank you. All right, I have a motion on the table. No other comments under discussion on the motion? Again, with the consideration we can revisit this if we need to as board under the certain guidelines, or there would have to be accommodation in the district. So with that, I'm going to call the vote. All those in support of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
Do you want to do Mr. Burnett first?
Sure, if this doesn't eat me alive, I'm glad to. President Sullivan?
Yes, would you want to repeat the motion?
Yes, but I also want to ask another process question.
Please, thank you.
That's what's holding us up here, because I understand exactly what Dr. Norene wants to do, but I also understand the challenge here. We've got some unanswered questions. And again, I think that begs the question, part of what Dr. Norene's motion does, we may want to get further information on it, so I'm wondering if you're amenable to segmenting some of these out and doing part of it in a motion and coming back with further information? Or do you want to delay the entire motion till we come back with, for a full portfolio of information? Does that make sense, Dr. Norene?
I'm not sure. I would like to get as many of the fees okayed as we can tonight, you know, and then, and then come back and address some of the concerns for the ones that we pulled out, if that makes any sense.
The motion on the table says we would accept all that have been presented, with the exception of the ones he identified, and to piecemeal it by requesting an amendment. There could be an amendment to accept the cosmetology courses in addition if there's no further discussion, and postpone the Chandler Gilbert, is that where you're going?
Exactly, President Sullivan. I'm trying to, to eliminate the uncertainty that has been alluded to, but also accommodate the issues that Dr. Norene is asking about, which I think still requires some additional information. So if there's a way to restructure that motion, I think.
Okay. So if you, okay, trying to facilitate this here. So Ms. Bitter Smith is asking for a comment from you. Depending on how you answer, we could offer an amendment to the motion, and we would vote on that first.
I'm open, I'm open to any suggestions. Yes.
Good luck. So, let me see if I can put this together. I, and let me, this is a group think process, because normally I just would have the motion, but I, I'm getting mixed signals on what information we still need. My understanding is we would like some additional feedback, potentially in the cosmetology fees, because there is, I think, a distinct difference between what our faculty suggest and Dr. Norene's facts in terms of incremental cost. My, okay. I also think, though, that the board is, is receptive to this issue with the art, art history classes. There is some concern that perhaps that's an unnecessary fee, given what I've heard from the board. So if I were to ref, to make a motion to amend your motion, Dr. Norene, that would suggest that we would accept all the fees with the exception of the art history fee and the cosmetology fee, however, we would, we would intend to come back to, excuse me, back up, and the cosmetology fee with the understanding that we'd come back for the opportunity to revisit that?
Yeah, yeah.
Within a very quick timetable in order to accommodate what we need to do for enrollment purposes.
So this is group think?
I'm open to cleanup suggestions.
I understood that, I guess the question to you is, Dr. Norene, was the cosmetology explanation enough for you to move ahead in approving those or not?
No.
Okay, so they stay in the exception category, pending information that we need. Then the coursework that you identified at Chandler Gilbert, there were three courses?
Two.
Two? One are both art history?
Both.
Okay, okay. So then we could, we could do what with those? Given that that's also a registration issue five days?
My amendment was to, to remove the art history fee in totality.
Yep, okay.
And to, to deal with the other fees, accept the other fees, and also, but then come back on the cosmetology fee for a little additional information, but we didn't do that speedily. The board has to be ready to do a quick vote, and I.
Yeah, we understand that with direct information. Dr. Thor?
There's one other piece that's not being picked up here, and that's the courses that you said have been pulled, but are still on our list.
Right.
So that somehow needs to get.
And that's my understanding, though, that'll be included as the removal.
Yeah.
So with all of that discombobulated, do you want to restate my amendment?
Yep.
Because no one's seconded yet.
I believe the motion is to accept the fees as presented with. I believe the motion is to accept the fees as presented with three exceptions. One, that cosmetology fees are now.
To be re-reviewed.
Re-reviewed. The art history classes are to be denied, and those that were to have been pulled initially are to be added, are to be removed. Three pieces?
Yeah.
Subtracted, excuse me. Therefore, that is the motion. And do I have a second on the amended motion?
I don't believe a second is required.
If he agrees.
Yes.
A friendly amendment? Perfect. Okay, so we have.
So President Sullivan, just so I'm clear?
Dr. Burnett, I mean, Mr. Burnett, yes, hi.
Yes, I've been listening. Just so I'm clear, as a Board now, we're gonna, we're gonna make a decision to pull these fees, which basically eliminates the classes.
No.
Cosmetology isn't under the same timeline, but what our intention is, those that are under a pressure would not cancel the classes pending further information, except for the ones that were asked to be.
No, the classes will still be.
Right, and specifically the art history, because that's the one that's on short final. So we have to get an answer back to them. They need to get us updating information, and if that doesn't happen, then the course can't happen because.
They respond in three days. Oh, sorry, sorry, sidebar.
The classes will still be offered, there just won't be a fee attached to them, right?
So.
They can still conduct the class, they just won't have the guest speakers.
I see, okay.
Okay, so they can still do the class, it's just the guest speakers won't be a part of it, but the class can still go on as planned.
Correct.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I hesitate to speak on behalf of Chandler Gilbert since Dr. Peterson is not here, but I have seen cases where if there is an interest by the college in offering a particular set of programming that colleges, and I think that happened in the case of Australia Mountain, they took on that cost for that semester and were able to bring back the course fee at a time in a subsequent course fee acceptance period with all the responses that were necessary to get the courses approved on a subsequent attempt. So the course would still be able to be offered, it would just be the increase in fee that is currently being proposed would not be able to be offered in fall of '23 in regard to ARH 112 and 115.
Everybody, thank you for that clarification. All right, I'm gonna do this. There's a motion on the floor that had a friendly amendment that was accepted without being a real amendment. It's been seconded, so I'm gonna call the vote. All those students, I got that. Mr. Burnett is speaking to me from the heavens. So, Mr. Burnett, I guess I'll start with you on the motion. What is your vote?
Yes, my vote is aye for the motion.
Thank you. Moving forward, all those in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much for letting us sift through that and for your presentation. Dr. Gonzalez, did you get all that?
I believe so. I'm sure I'll need to reread the notes on this one. Thank you, President Sullivan.
I think with that, Bruce, and thank you, Dr. Norene, again, for your diligence in this area, in which we all appreciate your due diligence, is that we do need to keep attending to this matter. It just keeps resurfacing in some regards, so whether there are new processes, whether there are new thoughts, something for us to pay attention to.
And again, I just want to thank the staff and folks who've done all the work. I mean, I understand how difficult it is because they're doing it for their college, and I'm going through all of them for all the colleges, so I really appreciate the work that you guys put into it.
Okay, so I'm going to move us quickly through the next part of the agenda. We had an employment and separation report from December 17, '22 through January 20, '23. Are there any questions or comments on that report, Board members? Being none, then I'd like to move us to the first read of AmeriCopa Community College District Strategic Plan, recognizing there are some caveats around this, but I understand, Dr. Gonzalez, we will hear that in the presentation this evening.
President Sullivan, members of the Board, I would like to invite Dr. Kathy Hernandez, our interim Chief of Staff, and Dr. Camille Newton, FEC President, to provide the update on our strategic planning process.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Good evening, President Sullivan, Governing Board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC, colleagues and guests. Kathy Hernandez, interim Chief of Staff to the Chancellor and co-chair for the AmeriCopa Strategic Planning Process. This evening, I'm pleased to present with my co-chair the drafted strategic plan framework, which will span the 2023-2026 academic years.
Good evening, President Sullivan, Governing Board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC members, guests and colleagues. You know who I am, and I'm the strategic plan co-chair, and I'm happy to share the initial stages of our strategic planning process with you. Next slide, please. We worked with MGT consultants in the early phase of the strategic planning effort. The focus of this initial work was on gathering stakeholder input. You can see on the slide there the various modes used for participation, and identifying key AmeriCopa strengths, opportunities and goals. MGT consultants provided a rich amount of data through their use of the surveys, interviews, environmental scans and SWOT analyses with various constituent groups. The intent was that that work would engage the AmeriCopa community and develop themes that emerged from the data that would help to inform the MCCCD strategic plan. Next slide, please. In Phase 2 of the approach, we worked with Gonzalez Consulting to review the data that was gathered with fresh eyes and begin drafting that strategic plan. There was a deliberate focus on using a shared governance approach, we've heard that all night, for this development, including collaboration among Governing Board members and the Chancellor's Executive Council through multiple retreats. We came together to draft initial vision, mission and value statements, and the preliminary strategic priorities and goals that will guide the work and allow us to assess our accomplishments. Kathy will now share the initial results of that work.
In the collaborative envisioning process with members of the Board and Chancellor's Executive Council, over the last two months, a January session and a February 17 session, that work informed the revisions in the most recent strategic plan draft that is being presented for you this evening. The drafted framework was shared and discussed with members of CEC during their meeting this morning, and in that process, just as a reminder, Chancellor's Executive Council is inclusive of district leadership, college presidents, faculty executive council leadership, staff representative leadership, and senior council representatives. So it is a shared governance council for AmeriCopa. As a result of the dialogue, we're pleased to share that there was consensus on the majority of the framework that we're sharing with you tonight. Next slide, please, Elsa. I'd like to revisit the vision statement after we get toward, to the end of strategies and goals, as I think that there's some conversation and some updates to that. Next slide, please, Elsa. The proposed mission statement is the AmeriCopa Community Colleges ignite talent, transform lives and enrich communities through teaching, learning and service. A mission statement describes the what we do. It connects to and drives us toward achieving the vision. As a result of the collaborative process and the dialogue that we've had over the last two months, we do believe that there's consensus on this proposed statement. Next slide, Elsa. The core values, student-centric, integrity, collaboration, inclusiveness, innovation and respect, reflect the fundamental beliefs and behaviors that stakeholders establish as the highest priority for how we engage as individuals, as leaders and as members of our communities. We had extensive conversation around the development of the values. The descriptive statement following each core value provides expanded definition and context to meet the interests of stakeholders. As we continue to engage stakeholders more broadly across the system, we will focus on any needed refinement of these statements, but again, we believe that we have consensus around our core values. Camille will now share strategic priorities and goals.
So, given that we have that mission and the values, Governing Board and CEC members collaboratively work to identify the strategic priorities that will bring that strategic plan to life. We started with three, so you can see they were started with student outreach and success, economic resources and sustainability, and a cohesive identity. But our work in that collaborative retreat and our work through shared governance identified a fourth strategic priority focused on the support and development of our people or organizational talent. So now we have four around that center circle. And, next slide, please. And based on those strategic priorities, we have identified the goals. I have here in my notes that I could read them to you, but I know that you all have them in front of you, so we'll just say in an overview, there are three goals underneath student outreach and success, and we'll move to the next slide. And there are three more under economic resources and sustainability. I should indicate that as part of the work that we did collaboratively, that 2.3 defines and establishes workforce development programs within for public and private sectors. Yes, that that was one that we worked on in the group, and we can go to the next slide. And a cohesive identity, we worked significantly during our collaborative work to make sure that we captured what we think needs to happen in order to help AmeriCopa move towards that more cohesive identity that supports innovation and collaboration and work together as a district. And finally, the fourth strategy. We have two goals here. I think these are worth reading because these are brand new. AmeriCopa supports organizational talent through recruitment, retention efforts and opportunities to grow with the organization. We've already started to revise that as of this morning in order to highlight and indicate that we are improving our recruitment, retention efforts and opportunities to grow in order to support our organizational talent. We want to emphasize that improvement of those opportunities in order to support talent. And next slide, please. Kathy is gonna talk about next steps.
Elsa, can you actually take us back up to the vision, please? So during the conversation with the Chancellor's Executive Council this morning, we recognized that we wanted to revisit this statement. A vision statement should reflect the aspirations of the organization moving into the future. The right vision empowers and inspires us to consider the limitless possibilities under a common purpose and direction. While we shared this most recent version that was established, we recognize today that the vision statement is the one aspect of the strategic plan framework where we have not reached consensus among stakeholders, and thus we anticipate the vision statement will continue to be revised. We will continue engaging Governing Board members and CEC in development of a shared vision as we finalize this work. In keeping with our shared governance philosophy, we felt was very important, that while we have developed in collaboration through those envisioning sessions, a number of different vision statements, we are still striving to find the one that really resonates with the majority of individuals, something that empowers them and inspires them around the work that we do and that aligns well with our mission and the work around that. Elsa, can we go to the next step slide now, please? Following the presentation this evening, our next steps are to begin looping out to additional constituency groups across the system for feedback on the framework. As we finalize the framework, we will begin with stakeholder groups to develop the implementation plan, inclusive of milestones and activities, so that we can continue to work on this with the March deadlines in mind. Simultaneously, we'll begin establishing a framework for tracking and reporting on plan achievement. This will include alignment of additional system plans and college plans. We anticipate the final framework will be presented to the Board in March, internal tracking and reporting mechanisms established by the end of the academic year, and the new strategic plan is still on target to launch in July of 2023. Thank you for your time. That concludes our presentation. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Newton. This is open for some Board member comments if they'd like to. I just want to remind us as Board members alone, we're not wordsmithing this document. You know, there's always danger in playing with that. I appreciate your intention around the vision statement, and I'm sure you'll help us understand what you're thinking about processes to bring us together again to evaluate or comment on vision as the writers work together. So if I can ask Board members if you have comments or questions on this presentation, again, not wordsmithing, that's welcome. So I'll just open it up to anyone. Dr. Thor?
I just have a question about next steps. So I assume that we are still slated to approve the strategic plan at our March meeting, but that we will have an opportunity to discuss this, particularly a revised vision statement at Agenda Review?
Yes, that is the plan.
So that's our opportunity to weigh in on the latest vision statement.
Make that happen, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I also want to remind everyone, we will not be looking at specific implementation plans. That is evolving once we approve this framework. You're all nodding, so we're all in agreement on that. I can't see, Ms. Smith, was that a nod? Oh, good, a nod, thank you. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any questions or appreciation of anything else we need to do to support this moving forward?
Well, we have really appreciated, you know, what we've done to get to this point. The shared governance thing continues because we've worked closely with our Governing Board in two retreats to get to this place, and we're open for continued discussion around this. I think it was well articulated that it needs continued massaging, particularly around the vision statement itself. And the conclusion, by the way, the conclusion I think that we came to in CEC today is that we're probably at the place where we should be because there are many interests around this. It's barely important, and we want to be proud of what we say our vision is in the end, and there is still the appetite to have it on a T-shirt.
You can start at the front and end at the back. Yes, I got it, teasing. So I think we're ready to have you move forward in that work, keeping us in the loop. Dr. Norene reminded me that next week is Agenda Review, and that is due to spring break, so March 7. In the event that there's a delay, you need to give us a red flag or an amber flag or something pretty quickly if you really believe we can't get to some conversation around that statement at Agenda Review. I believe based on the nods that I've seen this evening, is if we can get through that piece, this would be ready for approval, a second read and approval on March 28. So think about how you might want to work through that group, and then let us know. Let me know, and we can communicate that throughout the Board.
President Sullivan, I can already answer that. I think that due to spring break, the Chancellor's Executive Council meeting has moved to March 7 in the morning, and they will spend the morning working on this collaboratively, and so I do think that we will be prepared to present.
Excellent. Board members, do you have any other comments on this? Yeah, that was good. I believe Dr. Gonzalez was really giving you that direction, you know, and.
May I amend that?
No.
So.
His eyebrows, I've never seen go quite that high, but...
It's now being a 5-0, you know, they lose their place, sorry. Do you have a comment?
I guess I can't amend that motion.
I think it stands. Again, if you run into an issue, just let us know, and we'll go from there. If you want to play off some ideas and send them through Elsa to the board where we can offer some reaction, that would be fair and certainly part of the process moving forward. And, you know, this is going to stand for a few years, and I think this is representative of a lot of hours and a lot of good work for many people. And as I met with the president's council today to kind of relay what we are, how we feel about the plan, I mean, we're ready to rock and roll, and that may date me, but I'm still ready to rock and roll on this. And I think it represents a lot of investment of time and effort to ensure that we're constantly keeping the students in the front, we're student-centric, and we're wrapping our thinking and programs and directions around a lot of that. That's one of the things we wanted to achieve, and we're on there. And then it will be to the presidents and their teams to create those implementation plans that we could look at pretty quickly. So I think that's pretty known. The eyebrows just went up a little further down at the other end. Anyway, for those of us who aren't here, that was me looking down the table to Dr. Gonzalez. Thank you very much for your presentation, and without further questions, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you. So, board members, next comment would be, do you have any questions on our budget analysis report for Fund One, time period noted on the agenda? Being none, then, let's just talk to each of you to find out if you have anything to report. Dr. Burnett, I'll start with you. Dr. Burnett? I mean, Mr. Burnett?
It's all right. I was waiting for you to say mister, not doctor.
Yeah, okay. You caught me.
Don't worry.
Yeah, Mr. Burnett.
I have some, I'll save my report for when I'm there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Buttersmith?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Just quickly, I and several of the board members attended the ACCT Legislative Conference in DC a few weeks ago and was able to attend in person the first Public Policy Committee of ACCT for the year. We haven't had a AmeriCopa member of that committee in a long time, I think, maybe never. So it's a good learning experience for me. And the PAC Committee here of the board has continued to meet and work vigorously with the Government Affairs Team. As you heard earlier, a lot of moving pieces at the legislature, most importantly, the EL issue, so we're working hard on those solutions. This afternoon, I was able to join many of those in the room to celebrate the new baccalaureate degree opportunities, which is very exciting, five days and counting. And then just finally, a personal thank you to the Rio Salado team for a new program that I'm personally very happy about, which is a broadband technology program. Thank you, Dr. Smith, and your team for working with the Society of Cable Television Engineers to make that happen. That will help all the interference you're having on broadband signal and interconnection. Hopefully, we'll have lots of trained people to make that better. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Where did you get that, Dan?
Thank you. Thank you, President Sullivan, and after, since I just had a vacation in Hawaii. But prior to that, I was excited to be able to join many of my colleagues in Washington, DC for the ACCT conference, and along with Ms. Davis, we attended the New Trustee Academy, which was a crash course in this job, so it was very helpful. And then we, along with Ms. Davis, we did tour Glendale Community College and saw their impressive programs, and we are beginning to schedule other tours at many of the colleges, looking forward to doing that in the coming weeks. And I have begun working with the foundation board and getting involved with the board and looking forward to that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Ms. Davis?
Ditto what Ms. Butler said.
Well, that sums it up. Dr. Norene?
Well, we'll start with the ditto, and I did attend the ACCT conference in DC, which was really good and informative. I also got to be part of the visit to Mesa from First Lady Jill Biden. That was exciting, coming back to my alma mater. And also the foundation board and some great reports we had this last week and what they're, the wonderful work that they're doing. I also attended South Mountain Community College Metzger's Indie Film Festival, which was really informative. It was kind of documentaries about what's happening in our valley. And I want to congratulate the academic All-Americans across the district. I think we have 22 academic All-Americans across the district. And also, again, I just want to congratulate Dr. Gonzalez again for the diversity award. I'm not sure what he's more proud of is the award or being awarded alongside Dr. Alfredo de los Santos. I mean, those are big shoes, so congratulations. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I also attended the event with the First Lady and Education Secretary and wanted to congratulate Mesa Community College for an excellent event, and I really appreciated their recognition. And I also was very impressed by the student speaker and want to acknowledge that she seemed very well-prepared and inspiring, and would love to hear in future updates if there are other mayors that have a similarly helpful relationship with their community college presidents and other leaders, and in particular, if they are taking an interest in the financial aid that is needed for their students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor.
Well, I also want to congratulate Dr. Gonzalez on receiving the diverse champions award. And like Dr. Norene, I was very pleased to see that the, that there will be recognition posthumously of Dr. Alfredo de los Santos Jr. And for our new board members, Dr. de los Santos was vice chancellor for Student and Educational Development for the AmeriCopa Community Colleges for more than 20 years. And Dr. de los Santos, along with Chancellor Paul Elsner, in my opinion, were really the instrumental people in developing the AmeriCopa Colleges into the premier district that it is today. So that is recognition that is, in my opinion, long overdue. I also, of course, have to give a shout out to Dr. Kate Smith on her receipt of the Woman of the Year Award, and as was mentioned, I was honored to have received it in 2017. So I know how wonderful it is to receive recognition from other women leaders in both Arizona community colleges and in the Arizona universities. So congratulations. And finally, I want to acknowledge the passing of Dr. Ken Roberts. Dr. Roberts worked for the AmeriCopa Community Colleges for 37 years, and I think this is unparalleled. He was an early leader at three of our colleges, founded, one of the founding administrators of Rio Salado, founding administrator of Paradise Valley, and the second generation of leaders at South Mountain. And he retired as the vice president of Academic Affairs at South Mountain, and he was widely respected and I think unquestionably was considered one of the best vice presidents of academic affairs that this district has ever had, and so I wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. So for me, there's a lot of ditto's out there. I think a couple of things that stand out, certainly, I was delighted to be invited to be at Mesa to greet the First Lady, second time, you know, yay, and also the Education Secretary. I was impressed, and certainly with the student, I would support Ms. Smith on that, and if that's what Promise scholarships create and produce, I mean, she's a role model for so many people, and the fact is she's a role model for her father. She is a Promise Scholarship recipient rejoined, learning her trade, and her father is following in her footsteps. Kind of intriguing, isn't it? You know, there are too many meetings to count. I just want to say that, but there are a couple that stand out for me, and they were the strategic planning meetings, and I appreciate everyone's investment. And certainly, it's a deliberate intention from the board to be participative with all of you in moving this district forward, and I thought those meetings were really impactful to move an agenda. And someday, I hope, maybe it can be with more people, not just CEC and others, where people can understand that the board is really invested in their interests and that we do this work because we want to. And, yeah, no one's getting a 1099. I was asked that today, if I was expecting one, I had to decline. No, I'm not. And I say that with all good feeling. The last thing, I also was in DC attending the ACCT meeting, and the one thing that constantly resonates is how well-respected we are as a district. You know, we may have some of our challenges in term or whatever amongst ourselves, but when we're out in the public, people really have a high level of respect for our community college system. I think everyone who attended recognized that. I happen to serve on two committees, the Governance and Bylaws, and also a Regional Nominating Committee to that board, so more meetings. And I want to remind the board members that in April, there will be an all trustee meeting. By that, I mean all trustees throughout Arizona meeting, and I encourage us all to be in attendance. The AACT Director will be coming to Arizona to present and be part of that, those sessions, so just keep that in mind as you're looking at your calendars, working with Elsa. Last thing, I know it's hard sometimes when we're busy answering emails and communicating, but it's wise if we keep Elsa informed of what we're doing because she's really trying to coordinate us all together and keep us on our track. So that's one thing. And the last thing I'd like to do is, in recognition of so much tragedy or things that happen on campuses, regardless of elementary, middle school, high schools, universities, I'd like to show appreciation to the law enforcement officers who come here, I don't think they know we're talking about them, that come here to our meetings, sit through our conversations, protect us in regards to keeping us safe and what they do on campuses all the time to do the same. I hope we never have to come up against a horror story, but we certainly know that our law enforcement would be there to take care of us. So thank you very much for taking care of us. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. I know it's been long. Thank you for your attention and your goodwill, and we'll see you soon.